The Assembly will come back to order. We will go to Order of Business, eight motions, resolutions, and notices.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under Order of Business Eight, I move that SJR one be taken from the Chief Clerk's desk. And wait, nope, just one minute.
Assemblywoman, if you were about to move that we go into a committee of the whole, is that where you were going?
That's absolutely right, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. I've moved that the Committee of the Whole rise and report to the Assembly.
You've heard the motion. Before I take a vote on that motion, I received correspondence from legal counsel that I wanted to make sure that the body was aware of. There is a legal opinion uploaded on Nellis that addresses some issues that have been raised. So I'm going to read into the record. There have been questions as to whether the legislature has the power to pass joint resolutions proposing state constitutional amendments at a special session convened by the governor if those proposed amendments are not related to the business for which the legislature has been specially convened. The legal opinion from the LCB Legal Division addresses those legal questions and concludes that the legislature has the power to pass joint resolutions proposing state constitutional amendments at a special session regardless of whether such joint resolutions are related to the business for which the legislature has been specifically or has been specially convened. So that has been uploaded on the Nellis, the actual legal opinion itself. So with that, Assemblywoman Benitez-Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would move that the Committee of the Whole rise and report to the Assembly unless we have already done so, in which case I would say that we should go to...
No, I don't think we have. Assemblywoman Benitez-Thompson's moved that the Assembly dissolve into the Committee of the Whole. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? We're not in the Committee of the Whole, are we?
One minute recess.
One minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under Order of Business Eight, I move that the Senate Joint Resolution One be taken from its place on the Chief Clerk's desk and referred to the Committee of the Whole.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Assemblywoman Benitez-Thompson.
Assembly Joint Resolution Two, Introduce by Committee of the Whole, proposing to amend the statute to revise provisions governing the rate of the tax upon the net proceeds of minerals extracted in this state.
Assemblywoman Benitez-Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that Assembly Joint Resolution Two be referred to your Committee of the Whole.
Without objection, so referred.
And now, Mr. Speaker, I believe that we are ready for a motion to, for the Assembly to resolve itself into a Committee of the Whole.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are in the Committee of the Whole. We will go to, and for the body's information, we are going to, and this has been discussed with leadership across the aisle, consider AJR and SJR, AJR one and SJR one together. And so they are essentially the same concept with the same presenter with a slight difference in that allow us to be able to ask questions and have those addressed in a timely manner. And so with that, I would invite Martin Fitzgerald, who I believe if BPS can get him connected with us, will go through the provisions of AJR one and SJR one.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. If you could state your name and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the record, I am Martin Fitzgerald. I'm going to walk you through AJR one and SJR one, which propose to repeal and replace Article 10, Section 5 of the Nevada Constitution. I'll start with AJR one. Under Section 1 of this resolution, the legislature is required to provide by law for the taxation of mines, mining claims, and the proceeds of all minerals, including oil, gas, and other hydrocarbons extracted in this state. Section 2 of this resolution initiates a minimum tax on the gross proceeds of minerals extracted in this state at a rate of 7.75% starting on January 1, 2023. Section 3 of this resolution provides that the revenue generated by mining would be split with 75% of proceeds going to the general fund and 25% of proceeds going to a separate account in the state treasury to be used exclusively to provide for the educational health care or economic benefits for residents of Nevada. Section 4 of this resolution has two components. Subsection A provides that a majority of the members elected to each house is necessary to provide, is necessary to pass any provision of a bill that enacts or amends a law providing for the taxation of mines, mining claims, or the proceeds of minerals extracted in this state in a manner that creates, generates, or increases any public revenue in any form. Subsection B provides that an affirmative vote of not fewer than two-thirds of the members elected to each house is necessary to pass a bill to reduce the rate of or providing from the tax and the gross proceeds of minerals extracted by a particular class of taxpayers or imposed on a type of mineral extracted. I'll move on to SJR one. Sections 1 and 2 of SJR one are the same as AJR one. Section 3 of SJR one provides that the revenue generated by mining would be split with 50% of the proceeds going to the general fund and 50% of the proceeds going to a separate account in the state treasury to be used exclusively in accordance with Section 4. Section 4 provides that the account created by Section 3 must be used exclusively to make payments for the, from the proceeds of this revenue to eligible Nevada residents as determined by the legislature, starting on August 30, 2024, and continuing on a yearly basis thereafter on the last Friday in August. Section 5 of this resolution is the same as Section 4 of AJR one. With that, Mr. Speaker, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. So the body is aware, as we go through questions, Mr. Brian Fernley, as well as Russell Gindin with our Tax Division are available to answer questions as it relates to their roles within LCB. And also because of the nature of this and the status that we are in, we have agreed to allow Mr. Tyree Carr from the Nevada Mining Association to be available, not only to offer testimony, but to answer some questions as it pertains to the association. So with that, Assemblywoman Titus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is on, I guess for Mr. Fernley on this one. And on both of these, AJR one and SJR one, where it states that we're, it takes a majority of members to pass any provisions to amend the taxation or increases in the revenue form, but it takes a two-thirds of the members to reduce the rate. So is that standard policy? Has that been a policy in any of these other tax forms, or is this unique to these two resolutions?
This is Brian Fernley with the Legislative Council Bureau. I am not aware of any other provision of the, any other provision of law that would be subject to that requirement. Article 4, Section 18 currently sets forth a requirement of two-thirds of the legislature to approve bills or joint resolutions that create, generate, or increase public revenue in any form. This, this bill would, or this joint resolution would amend the Constitution to essentially create an exception to that requirement for bills that would increase the stated rate of the tax on the gross proceeds of minerals contained in the joint resolution.
Right. So this bill would then, or these two bills would single out one industry from our Constitution to allow an increase in their taxes by a simple majority versus every other industry or any other tax that we have currently in our Constitution or in our laws? Question?
Yeah, sorry. Again, this is Brian Fernley. And I think it's also important to point out that under Article 10, Section 1, mining currently is exempted from the Uniform and Equal Clause that is contained in Article 10, Section 1. But this, yes, this provision would create an exemption to, to provide that a majority of the legislature could increase the rate of the gross proceeds tax on mining.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. And then the other question I have is the term that we're going from, in the past it's been the net proceeds, and now we're switching to the gross proceeds. And perhaps, I'm not sure, Mr. Gindin can answer that question, or what was the philosophy behind that change from net to gross?
For the record, this is Russell Gindin with Fiscal Analysis Division of the Legislative Council Bureau. I don't have the ability to answer that question as legislative staff. This is, you know, Steph, this is not my bill in terms of making the decision of the elements of this joint resolution that's before you this evening, in terms of the decision to move away from taxing on net to having it gross.
And I thank you for that, and I understand. Do you know if any other, any other company or anybody else pays the gross? And just for that, I mean, doesn't gaming actually pay on its net, knowing it's a handle and not a gross, say, in coin? So can you explain the difference in that? Or is there any other company that pays the gross?
Yeah, the gaming tax that's in Chapter 463, and it's actually, it's Section 370. It actually says it's a tax on gross revenue. So the definition is on the cash winnings as well as other cash received for playing games. They do get the allowance for, right, that if you put $20 in a machine and you win $3, then, right, the house is keeping 17 and you got your free bet. So the tax is not on handle or drop for a table game. The tax is on the revenue that the gaming establishment retains from the gambling activity. The other adjustment to the gross gaming tax is the allowance for credit extended is not taxed till, it's actually collected from any winnings that would have been generated through credit. And so that is the gross gaming tax. Then if you're asking me, then the other tax that we have that is a gross, it's a tax on the gross revenue of businesses is the commerce tax that was actually approved by the legislature in the 2015 session. That is a tax that's on the gross revenue generated by businesses who have over $4 million a fiscal year in their gross revenue. It's probably worth pointing out that because of the constitutional provisions that are currently in Section 5, that, that the mining industry does not pay the commerce tax because, right, it says no other tax may be imposed upon the proceeds. So that's, so although the commerce taxes, the state's broad-based tax on the gross revenue of businesses, the mining industry is not part of that because of the constitutional provisions that currently exist. So hopefully Assemblywoman answered your question. If not, please let me know and I can follow up.
Great, thank you, thank you for that clarification. I guess it's a clarification, but thank you, Mr. Gindin. I also, is there anywhere else in the country that has a tax system like this on mining that is proposed in these two joint resolutions?
I don't consider myself, excuse me, Russell Gindin for the record, I don't consider myself to be an expert on the taxes on mining in other states. Clearly, there are other states that put taxes on the gross proceeds from severance taxes or gross proceeds taxes on the value of the extraction of minerals extracted from their state. So that would be my response to that question. I just, I don't off the top of my head remember the structure. I do know some of the other states do have taxes that are on the gross proceeds in nature or the gross value.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I've got Assemblywoman Neal.
Thank you, Chair. So I had a question to Mr. Gindin and to Mr. Fernley, but to Mr. Gindin first. So Mr. Gindin, in, I guess I have to reference it, but SGR one and AJR one, they have simul language. I ask you a question about the combined property tax rates. So the strikeout language has the county, the sum that would go to the county. Can you talk about how much the local government receives now under the tax rate?
Yes, again, for the record, Russell Gindin with Fiscal Analysis Division. So what, the latest data that I would have available to me for analysis is the data reported for calendar year 2019 that was used to base the taxes that were paid by the mining operators in FY 2020. So based on the information for that calendar year, that the taxes that would have come on what we call the combined property tax rate, or it's also referenced as the combined ad valorem rate. And so if you wouldn't mind, I'll just say for everybody, that is the property tax rate like you're paying on your property. So the mines at a minimum under current statute and Constitution are paying a tax that's equal to the property tax rate, and that's the rate that imposed by the local government, school districts, and then the state actually imposes the 17 cent state debt rate, with those proceeds going to fund the state's capital improvement projects and paying off bond. So for calendar year 2019, based on the amount of net proceeds that were reported and tax paid, the, it would have been around 64, excuse me, $65 million that, the total amount that would have been paid for that combined property tax rate. And that amount includes the amount that would have been paid on royalties, royalty proceeds, along with the tax that was paid on the net proceeds by the mining operators.
And then my second question is to, I guess I'll go ahead and just ask to Mr. Fernley. So also in the strikeout, it says that the governmental units, that the tax is apportioned or appropriated to each county and is a portion among the government units and districts. So I wanted to know if that included cities and special districts.
Yes, under the, under the language of the Nevada Constitution as it currently exists, the legislature is required to appropriate to the counties an amount equal to the, the property tax rate in the taxing district of the mining operation multiplied by the net proceeds of the mining operation. The county then apportions that among the governmental units and districts within the county. So yes, you know, cities, special districts that would receive property taxes imposed on the property in the county would also receive a portion of the net proceeds of minerals taxed.
So with the strikeout, what would be the process after this, the voters pass it, and then what would need to happen in order to deal with the revenue that these governmental units or districts may have been receiving?
The effect of striking out the language in subsection 2 of Section 5 of Article 10 is that it removes the requirement for, it removes the constitutional requirement for the legislature to appropriate that money to the local government, to the county, and then for the county to apportion it among the governmental units and the districts within the county. So by removing that constitutional requirement, it would be within the discretion of the legislature to determine whether counties and local governments would receive the same amount. I guess it would, it would give to the legislature to determine what amounts the counties and local governments would receive from the net proceeds tax.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Assemblywoman Toles.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll actually, if I may, start with a follow-up question to the last question from my colleague before me. So what I heard you saying is it removes that, essentially that protection that is designated to local communities, and so, you know, then the legislature can decide what to do with it. So do we know what the potential impact of that might be, the estimated impact of that might be on local communities by removing that protection? Do we have some sort of estimates if we were, the legislature were to in the future decide to delegate that all to the state? I suppose that question would be for Mr. Gindin.
Again, for the record, this is Russell Gindin, Principal Deputy Fiscal Analyst with the Fiscal Analysis Division. That's a hard question for me to answer, the effect, other than, right, as Mr. Fernley explained, that the constitutional requirement for that distribution to occur would be removed. But then thus it would be up to the legislature to decide what if, what amount of the revenue from the gross proceeds tax would, would be allocated, if any, to the local government. So as I stated, that in FY 2020, based on the calendar year 2019 actual data, that total amount that came from that, that combined property tax rate that is being imposed upon the net proceeds and the royalties and then being distributed out to the entities that have rates in place, again, that would be the counties, cities, towns, TITs, SIDs, school districts, debt rates, was approximately $65 million. So I, that's, that's the total for all of the rates statewide. And obviously, the, the impact would then be felt by each entity that would have the rate in place in terms of the revenue that they would not get unless the legislature then makes the decision how much to allocate from the gross proceeds, well, from the revenue from the gross proceeds tax back to the local government.
Okay, thank you. And follow-up, Mr. Chair. So just to make sure that I understand this correctly, this, as it's written, would apply to all mining, not just, you know, not just gold, it would include gypsum and copper and fluoride and, you know, so on and so forth. Is that correct? So it would apply to all those mining and minerals?
This is Brian Fernley. Yes, it would apply to all minerals extracted in the state.
Thank you. And do we have any estimate of taking a look at moving it from net to gross, and then also changing it from five to 7.75? What the estimates are of, of that change, that impact for, for both of those factors, and particularly for some of those other elements that I just mentioned, what that impact might be carried down to, let's say, cost of construction, technology, and so forth? Have we worked out those factors?
I can answer, again, Russell Gindin for the record, I can answer, I think, the first part of that, and then I may need as for clarification on the latter part of the question with regards to the technology and that kind of stuff. So had this been in place, again, in calendar year 2019, and, because that's the latest data that I have, and it's this sort of static analysis, again, that based on the actual gross proceeds, including the royalty proceeds, again, of approximately $7.8 billion in calendar year 2019, the 7.75% tax on those gross proceeds would have generated approximately $607 And so then, if, if the decision was made to, you know, hold those entities that receive money from the property tax rate harmless, then that would leave net about $541 million from the gross proceeds tax. That then depending on the resolution, it would be a 50-50 split between the fund or then going to, basically under the way this would work is to the State General Fund, or under AJR one, it would be 75% to the general fund and 25% to the fund dedicated to those program areas specified in the resolution. And so if necessary, I can give those 75-25 or 50-50 splits, but it basically, you would be taking that $541 million. And again, that was my, just, I'm not trying to imply anything for the legislature. I was just saying, if the tax would generate approximately $607 million from the 7.75% tax on gross proceeds, and the decision was made to hold the local governments and all the entities receiving property taxes rates against the net proceeds, then that would leave $541 million to be distributed either 75-25, excuse me, or 50-50. So then the second part of the question, I'm not sure what the question is that I should be trying to address there.
That's okay. I think you, I think you gave me a good estimate there, and of course, that estimate, the $607 million and the $541 million after calculation would be assuming that all those mines stayed open, correct?
That is correct, as I, that, as I stated, that it's sort of that static analysis of taking the calendar year 2019 data and saying, okay, I know what the net proceeds were, this is what was actually paid under the current tax structure. And then if you would have then gone and applied the proposed tax structure that's either in SGR one or AJR one, then it would have generated that. So it does not include any effects that could occur on any of the operators from the imposition of the tax on the gross proceeds.
Go to Assemblywoman Bill Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So it's my understanding that we've carved out the mom and pop mines who make below 20 million, which, wow, mom and pop mines who make below 20 million. But let's look at that 80% of the gold in the entire U.S. is mined here in Nevada. And we have figures for the last 50 years at least, right, for, for these numbers. My question is, for those companies that we have not carved out, those mom and pops who make less than 20 million, are they located in Nevada? Are they headquartered in Nevada? Are they headquartered even in the U.S.? I guess that would be missed to Mr. Gindin.
I'm not sure the reference to the 20 million, because SGR one and AJR one are not making any exclusions as to who's in or who's out. As was explained, it's a 7.75% tax on the gross proceeds of the operators for all mineral types. Then with regards to, I don't know, the ownership structure of all the different mining operators that are in the state, that's perhaps a question best left, better left for somebody from the mining industry or mining association.
And I'm sorry, Speaker, and I apologize. Since we have three different AJRs I'm looking at, I did put the 20%. But if someone could address where these, these folks are headquartered, that would be, I would appreciate that. Thanks.
If I can, if I can assist, because we have previously discussed the mines that generate less, fewer, fewer dollars. I think we previously talked about 10 million, possibly 20 million. Mr. Gindin, could you, because I know it's been in discussion, although it's not necessarily in this bill, how many, how many mines would fall under, say, a $20 million threshold approximately? in this bill, how many, how many mines would fall under, say, a $20 million threshold approximately?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Russell Gendin with the Legislative Council Bureau. Maybe the easier way is to do the one minus that, if that's okay, which is, in calendar year 24, excuse me, calendar year 2019 data, there were 104 mining entities that reported information to the barbed taxation. When I looked at the data from that, I believe there was 12 entities for that calendar year that had gross proceeds that were over 20 million, or excuse me, net proceeds that were over 20 million. So, then that would mean, right, that that's 12 out of the 104 that would have net proceeds over $20 million. And two of those would be geothermal and the others were gold operators.
Assemblyman Ellison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple of questions. What would the total tax burden on mining, if the bill passed, what would that burden be? If they paid the MBT, the commerce tax, the sales tax, the property tax, and this industry, what would this come as specific taxes? And also, what I'd like to know is, is where rural Nevada consists about, you know, let me back up a little bit, because I kind of got lost listening to some of the statements about small mines. There are a lot of small mines in Nevada, Elko County, Humboldt County, Battle Mountain, Ely, Eureka, White Pine, there's, these small mines are all over the place. But to give you an idea, it takes 20 years to get a mine from the very beginning to get it up where it's producing. So, it takes 20 years and billions of dollars to produce a mine. Then once you get it running, it costs hundreds or hundreds of millions to buy the equipment to get it, keep it going and keep it operating, not counting the salaries and the benefits and this kind of stuff. So, the, some of the questions you asked were good, but there is not a lot of mines out there that are making billions of dollars like everybody seems to think with, with what it costs them to operate. So, we're looking at the gross and the net and that's going to be the biggest problem we're going to run into. So, but I'll give you an example, let's go back and look at White Pine. When the copper mines went broke because of the economy, what happened? The state had to come up and pick up that county. You're talking 17 counties in the state of Nevada. By the time we're done with this, if this goes and we don't put money back in the net proceeds of the counties, you're probably going to bankrupt six or seven of these right off, because they can't make it. So, just to give you a, a close idea of what we're facing here and where we're going to go, this could be disastrous and I'm hoping we can work everything out and I hope more smarter minds can come to the table. But right now, you're looking at things that are, are going to, you're guessing and throwing numbers and it, this should have been during the session where we could work this thing out, not during a special session. And I understand why you're trying to get it out there, but it's not going to work. We, we're not looking at, at trying to gather money from casinos or raise more funds out there, but maybe that's what we need to look at, is everything in a total, everything, but not just go after mining that is, is small and is boom bust every day. Look at the stock market, right now it's really high.
Mr. Ellison, are you getting to a question or is this going to be a floor statement?
Well, I'm trying to get to that, sir, and, and what I'm trying to do, I went off and I apologize. But what I would like to know is the tax burden that's going to, on mining, if this bill passed. And maybe you can tell us, and what about the small counties that get very little in net proceeds? They use that strictly to operate the cities like infrastructure. So, can you guys answer that on the tax burden and what happened to White Pine?
Again, for the record, Russell Gendin with the Legislative Council Bureau, I don't have the ability to answer your question about what it may specifically mean as to the impact on the mining operations in White Pine County and thus like the governmental entities in White Pine County. I also, it's difficult for me to answer the question here tonight on the, the, the total tax is on the mining industry, because as you mentioned, sales tax and the modified business tax and some of the others, that I can tell you that in FY 2019, they would have paid approximately $22.5 million in MBT from the 2% tax on the wages on mining operators. As to sales tax, I, I don't see that data reported by, like, mining, it's reported by various snakes codes, excuse me, North American Industrial Classification Codes, and thus I don't get to see mining specifically. So, I apologize, I can answer the MBT, I just don't have the ability to answer some of the other taxes and I don't have the property taxes in front of me, that's probably something that could be obtained and compiled, I just don't have it for you here this evening, some of it.
That's one of the questions I've got, shouldn't we have these numbers prior to voting on this bill and getting it out? We need to know the impacts and, and I think these taxes that we're looking at, that's going to be a burden back onto some of these areas, we need to know what these numbers are going to be and not just one county, but all counties, because every county in the state of Nevada has got some kind of mining, every one of them. And the other thing we need to look at also, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is every one of these increases is going to have a large impact on what we do in housing and everything else, roads, the cost is going to go skyrocket in every city, every town in the state of Nevada. Thank you.
So, there was no question there? Ms. Ellison, you have a question? Because I'm, I don't want to leave you before you're done.
Yes, I, what I said was, I was hoping that he could come up with the tax number before we pass these, because we're, we're guessing what these are going to be. We should know these numbers before we pass any kind of bills. And even if we got to wait until we go back into session or pull another special session, but we should know these numbers and the impact these counties. And I'm hoping you can give us that before we pass these bills.
Right, and if I can, I'm glad that you were able to restate it in, in a question. Mr. Gendin, could you, could you mention what the revenue would be into the state if this were in place in 2019 and compare that to what was generated into, actually generated in 2019?
Yes, again, for the record, Russell Gendin, and so, I, I guess maybe it's best just to provide it for both SGR1 and AGR1, if that's okay? So, under AGR1, which I've already gone through, that it, it would generate approximately $607 million in terms of the 7.75% tax on the gross proceeds from calendar year 2019. So then after, again, that's my assumption, that if we hold the entities that currently get proceeds from the net tax, that would be about $541 million that would be distributed. So then, under the AGR1, that where 75% of that would go to the State General Fund, that would be $406 million that would go to this general fund, but the net increase would be about $349 million, because the general fund's already got approximately $57 million under the current tax structure. So, again, that would be from the 75% portion, the general fund, the additional general fund revenue would be approximately $349 million and then that would leave approximately $135 million going to the 25% allocation, allocated fund. So then, for SGR1, again, it's the $541 million net after holding the local government harmless. So then the 50-50 split would be $271 million approximately. So then again, because the general fund is already receiving approximately $57 million from the current tax structure, that would be a net increase to the general fund of approximately $213 million. That would be the numbers for, and then excuse, I apologize, then the final would be, the additional 50% that would go to the, the fund under SGR1 would be the $271 million. So, that would be the amounts that would be generated in the distributional amounts that would occur under AGR1 and SGR1, under the 7.75% tax on gross proceeds.
Thank you, and I think the two, you, you made the point, but I, I wanted to make sure that it was clear, those estimates that you gave were after holding harmless the, the percentage that those counties that are currently getting revenue from mining get. So, that is, those numbers are based on the assumption that in statute, the legislature would hold those counties harmless?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, that, again, on my own intuition, did, what would be the net amount if you held them harmless? And so, that was the analysis that was done by me, under the assumption that the legislature, if they, they came in and held entities getting money harmless, then the amounts I gave you reflect that decision.
Thank you. Assemblyman Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I want to follow up on some comments by my colleague from District 7 and some comments that you made yourself. The idea of where the money goes that the county gets and holding them harmless. Counties with property taxes and currently with proceeds of mines know what's coming in and in many cases, especially with schools, they've gone ahead and bonded for that to pay for infrastructure. And if you have guaranteed by the Constitution that this will be your income coming for the next many years, then you can bond on it. However, if this is left up to the generosity of each, of each session of the legislature that comes along to determine how much is going to the counties and it's not guaranteed by the, by the Constitution, you'd be foolish to bond for it and you'd treat it as, as one-time money every time the money came up. So, in addition, 17 cents of that actually goes to the state for bonds that are already out there, as well as the counties that have already bonded for some of this money coming in for the next 20 years. So, I, I'm thinking that there's, there's, there's no way that, well, there is a way. The prudent way would be to, if you're going to modify the Constitution, would be to put that home, that hold harmless in your, change the Constitution, so that you don't have this idea of, of the legislature down the road saying, oh, we changed our mind, we're not going to do that. And then you've got counties who have bonded for that and, and then it rolls downhill and, and the state will be taking over counties like we did White Pine. Okay, that's a statement, my, I have a question. There are some mines in the state that aren't treated as mines, they're treated as manufacturing and I'll, I'll refer to Eagle Pitcher who does Ditamaceous Earth, I'll refer to the Gerlok where they have their sheet rock, I'll refer to Nevada Cement where they sell stuff and it's not considered proceeds of mines, it's considered a manufacturing process. So, would this change the definition of mines to include them or keep them separate? And I'm not sure who we need to answer that, but that's a question, thank you.
This is Brian Fernley, Legislative Council. I don't believe this constitutional amendment would, would, or this proposed constitutional amendment would change that. It refers to minerals extracted, so once, I, I believe that once the, the mineral is, has been extracted, that's when the, the tax would apply to the proceeds of that mineral extracted, then after that, it would, it would not apply. So, I, the answer to the question is no, this, I don't think this proposed amendment would change that.
If I could follow, I'm, I'm not sure where the designation manufacturer comes from, but it does seem to overlap a little bit. You are actually digging stuff from the ground, which is mining, and you're making a product and selling that wholesale and retail, as Nevada Cement does, and they don't pay proceeds of mines. And yet, when you take away the, the business of proceeds of mines and you change it to a gross on mining, I, I'd like to see, I'd like to know what the statute say about that to say, now, does that manufacturing with, with stuff from the ground now qualify under this gross proceeds? So, and I, I see, I hear you say, I don't know, and I think we should know that. That's my comment, thank you.
And again, this is Brian Fernley, Legislative Council. The, the language of the proposed constitutional amendment actually mirrors the language of the current tax on the net proceeds of minerals. So, I, I think that the two, the applicability of the two taxes would be interpreted the same. But it also refers to, it doesn't, it doesn't refer to a tax on mining, it refers to a tax on the proceeds of minerals extracted. So, I, I think it would be a tax on the, on the, the proceeds of the mineral and, and it would be, and this is based on the, the current, the language is, is the same as the current law, so I think it would apply in the same manner as, as current law, is, the rate would be different and it would be a tax on the gross proceeds rather than the net.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This body passed SB 358 last session unanimously, the new, the Nevada Renewable Portfolio Standard. I'm wondering, the geothermal aspect of this, what kind of, you know, that, that this would affect them and if we're looking to, you know, achieve this portfolio standard, what kind of chilling effect that might have? I know you can't answer that per se, but my statement is, I'm concerned about the impact that geothermal, those resources for clean energy, how that's going to be impacted now with a tax structure change. Do you, Mr. Gendin, have any numbers that can help us understand, what does geothermal pay now?
Sorry, Russell Gendin, for the record, for some reason tonight here, my mouse is a little slow in terms of when you click on it and when it wants to do what it's supposed to be doing. So, under current, the current structure that's in Chapter 362, geothermal mines actually are, geothermal operations only pay the combined property tax rate. So, they have that different and distinctive treatment compared to the other types of mining operations going on that are subject to the, their tax on their net proceeds, such as they could go all, those types of entities could go all the way to the maximum 5% rate. But geothermal right now under current statute would be restricted to only paying the combined property tax rate and it may be better for Mr. Fernley to have to answer a question, but it would be perhaps my understanding that, that these are passed, that the legislature could still keep that structure on geothermal if these constitutional amendments were approved in terms of keeping them at the combined property tax rate.
I, did I, I might have missed that last part you said, that it's not a given that if this passed, that geothermal would be affected by the 7.75%? That they would get to stay at the, the, the current property tax rate?
Mr. Fernley is available, so I will defer to him, Assemblywoman.
Thank you.
And this is Brian Fernley, Legislative Council. Yes, the geothermal was taxed as, in the same manner as the net proceeds of minerals by a legislative decision. It is not, I, I don't believe it is considered a, a mineral extracted, so the legislature made the choice to tax it in the same manner as minerals, but it, I don't think the, the legislature is, would be required to do so under this constitutional provision. The legislature could maintain the current tax structure for geothermal or, or, or change it even, and, and the legislature could, could change it, I believe, under the, even under the current constitutional structure. And the legislature could change it, I believe, even under the current constitutional structure.
So it's not clear, then? I mean, I don't feel like I'm getting any comfort. It's still kind of floating out there that it could be the property tax rate, it could maybe that the body decides that, but it's not in the bill?
Yes, I think it would be in the discretion of the legislature to decide in a companion bill or in a future bill how geothermal would be taxed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assemblyman Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My question goes back to the analysis, and I'd like to know if that was a static analysis when you did the estimates. Would that assume that all the mines remain open, nobody diminishes their operations, at least what we're producing now would be, continue to be produced? And if that's not the case, what kind of an impact are we looking at if, say, 25%, 30%, 40% of the mines either shut down or diminished their operations? And what about the secondary and tertiary impact to other businesses that support them? Do we have any, do we have any really good analysis on what all those costs could be? Because I'm afraid that I'm going to lose hundreds of jobs in my district, and it's going to impact everybody, really, across the state, because there are so many other businesses connected with mining. So have we done a holistic assessment of what those revenues might be that we would lose?
For the record, Russell Ginnon with the Fiscal Analysis Division. No, you are correct, as I stated, that I'm just taking the calendar year 2019 data as to say, what if it had been in place against those gross proceeds? So I'm not even really inferring, it's like an estimate, because this thing would not be effective if it was approved by the voters in terms of getting on the 2022 ballot. So it would be effective for calendar year 2023. So I'm not attempting to state or imply that these amounts would be the estimate that it would yield if it was in place in that point in time. I'm simply saying, if you took the calendar year 2019 data and applied the 7.75% rate, it would generate X, and then I can compare that to what it would generate under the current structure, Y. So no, I'm not trying to go in and make assumptions about what mines may close and even shut down 25% of them. Because what 25% would I shut down? Could there be effects on the industry? Yes, the taxes can have effects on business. The interesting thing about the net proceeds of minerals tax, that like in calendar year 19, I believe, just to give you some idea, that, as I've already stated, that there were 10 entities that had net proceeds of over 20 million in that calendar year. They generated 92% of the total taxes due on the net proceeds of minerals for that calendar year. So you can see, it's a very top-heavy tax. So then you can see then, well, the results would vary drastically depending on what 25% or 50% of the mines that are shut down. If you shut down some of the small ones, clearly it would have an impact on them, but it may not affect the amount of revenue generated from the tax. But if you start shutting down any of those top 10 or 12, yes. And so that's probably the best response that I can give you this evening, is that I have not tried to do what I think we would call sort of like a sensitivity analysis of shutting down certain mines and what could be the marginal effect.
I'm afraid my connection kind of went...
Did we lose you, Mr. Edwards? All right, I'm going to move on, and hopefully he can get back, and I'll call on him again. Assemblywoman Vinitas Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I guess I have some questions in going back, I want to refocus the questions, because I think a lot of the testimony being put on the record is being presented with like a lot of what-ifs, a lot of what-ifs. We don't know the impact of this, we don't know numbers, we have no possible way to understand how this can happen. And so I just want to make sure, once again, that for the record, we're reminding the body, we're reminding the members, we're reminding the public, that we have lots and lots of data, and we have lots and lots of numbers. And we've been collecting numbers on gross proceeds and net proceeds for a long time in this state, and they're readily available. And so even someone like me, who is just horrible with arithmetic, can look at these numbers that our Department of Taxation produces in the Net Proceeds of Mining Bulletin, and get a better idea of what is happening, where we're collecting, where we're not collecting. And the biggest thing is where we can see, just where we have the opportunity to rebalance once we've removed constraints out of the Constitution and allow the legislature to have conversations about these dollars and where they're going. I hear, I guess, if we go back to hard numbers, I heard Mr. Gindon tell us, we have 104 operators as of last year's report. Mr. Gindon and I write that we know by county the number of operators as well. We have that number. That's not, that's not a guessing game, that's not an unknown. We know by county how many operators there are, correct?
For the record, Russell Ginnon, the report that you refer to, which is the genesis for the data that I'm using for the analysis, that in terms of the numbers that have been referenced here this evening, it actually, it's one of the few times where we actually get to see a tax by the taxpayers. So it reports the mining operator, the type of mineral that they're extracting, in terms of generally, or principally extracting and paying the tax on, as well as what county that they're in. We know the combined property tax rate that's in the tax district in which the mine's located. And then we also know the total rate that they're paying, thus the amount that would go to the general fund. So we have quite a bit of detail available. At this point in time, I've only been able to sort of get the calendar year 2019 data into a nice spreadsheet where I can attempt to work with that level of detail on the 104 mining operations that you referenced.
Thank you so much. And I think that once you start looking at the data, it presents some pretty compelling data to me. And I think there's lots of conversations about, you know, we worry about these poor quote-unquote "mom and pop" mines, but we have data to work from that. We have a base, we have empirical evidence in which we can say, well, we know who's, what their gross are, we know what their net is, we know what their deductions are. So we have the ability in statute, should we address the constitutional change, to have the legislature go in and say, we can have some considerations for the type of, I think it's section, it's the B of Section 2, to say that we can look at exemptions, we can look at it by class of person, we can also look at by the type of mineral. So the legislature has the ability to go in and to give considerations. This legislation allows us to do that, right? I'm sorry, I said, I think it's, on my page, it's the last page of the bill on five, the sub-B. And I'm referencing the AJR 1, I'm sorry, of AJR 1.
And so again, the question was, again, just apologize for clarification?
The question is, this language allows us to go in, and we can look at the tax rate imposed, but we also have the ability to look at class of persons and types of minerals extracted.
I will allow Mr. Fernley to address that question, as your legal counsel.
Yes, this is Brian Fernley, Legislative Council. Under the language of subsection four, paragraph B, a vote of two-thirds of the members elected to each House of the Legislature would be able to either exempt a class of taxpayers or a type of mineral, or reduce the rate of the tax on the gross proceeds for a class of taxpayers or a type of mineral.
Thank you, so, thank you. So as I look at this, like when we look at, let's take last year's data information, let's take Eureka County, right? I think they had, remember, over $2 billion of gross proceeds? And under the status quo, Eureka County got 6 million of that, that was their portion due. And so when, and so if I were living in Eureka County, you could be asking yourself, you know, is 6 million really fair of over $2 billion of gross proceeds? That's more rhetorical than, Speaker, Chair, sorry, that's more rhetorical. Right?
Yes, Assemblywoman, this is Russell Ginnon. Yes, the numbers that you were citing with regards to Eureka County, that again, coming from the data that are available in the Proceeds of Minerals Bulletin, sound in the ballpark to me, that I believe all the mining, for all types of mining operations, is that they had approximately $2.3 billion in gross proceeds, which, and then that was about 600, almost $700 million in net proceeds, and thus the amount of the tax that came from the local government portion of the property tax rate was around $6.7 million that would have been generated for Eureka? That was the question that you were...
Correct. So if I were a resident of Lander County, where there was $1.8 billion of gross proceeds, I think I might, if I were living in Eureka, I'd be jealous of my counterparts in Lander, because Lander County had smaller net proceeds, but in the end, the local government portion due was $15 million. And so to me, I see such inequities even between our local rural counties, because you have, depending on how structurally, right now in the Constitution, the industry is allowed to calculate the tax, you have one county getting 6 million, but the gross proceeds are, you know, get one county getting 6 million, another county getting 15 million. And so I just feel like there's lots of opportunity to go in and readjust and rebalance. And if I were living in those rural counties, I would want this, because I would want the chance for my representative to come back and fight for more equitable distribution among rural counties. And once again, my apologies, Chair, that was more rhetorical, but am I incorrect in those numbers? I would guess, Eureka County gross proceeds, we covered that, Lander County, 1.8 gross proceeds, so less gross proceeds, but the local government, 15 million due to them. So they got more than the county with the high, than, with the lower gross proceeds, but they got a higher net proceeds and tax due as their local portion by a significant amount, correct?
For the record, Russell Ginnon, Fiscal Analysis Division. Yes, your observations on those numbers are correct. It's probably worth noting that, right, you're attaching a property tax rate. So this is not unique, perhaps, to mining. What's unique is that it's being attached, the property tax rate's being attached to a net concept, but this is the same property tax rate that's attached to real and personal property in the counties. So, right, the local governments have the ability to set the property tax rate at a level that they want. It's just that the combined property tax rate cannot exceed the 364 cap that's in statute. And so thus, what's driving those results of Eureka having more proceeds than Lander, but then getting less revenue, they're making the decision to impose a lower property tax rate in that county, in that tax district in which the mines are located, versus the property tax rate imposed in the tax districts in which Lander. So you have to be careful when you're just looking at the proceeds to which are in play between the different counties or the different mining operations, it's also the tax rate. And then I think the final point I would just provide here, it wasn't really part of the answer to your question, but I think is, we're probably pointing out, that remember, under the current construct, the general fund portion is based on the difference between the actual rate that's imposed less the combined property tax rate. So if the actual rate imposed is the combined property tax rate, there is no general fund, net proceeds of minerals tax paid by that operator that goes to the state general fund. So you need to end up having a property tax, you need to have a net proceeds of minerals tax rate higher than the combined property tax rate to have a general fund portion that goes to the general.
All right, thank you. I see no questions in the queue currently. What I'm going to do, as I indicated at the outset, I believe, VPS, we have Mr. Tyree Gray available, and because I would suspect there may be questions of him, I would ask that he be queued up. Mr. Levitt, I see you've lit up. Is it for Mr. Gray, or is it? Okay. Not for... You're a long ways away, I can't hear you over there.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. I think Mr. Gindon would be more appropriate to answer my questions. When we're looking at, like you said, there are 104 operators in the state, and my colleague from the north had said that we have all the data, do you, did you do any assessment on how many mines do not currently pay net proceeds due to their cost being higher than their, than their net?
Thank you, for the record, Russell Ginnon, Physical Analysis Division. I do have some information to present on that question. So again, of those 104 operators reporting for calendar year 2019, I believe it was 42 of them ended up having zero net proceeds from a tax basis point of view. That means that their deductions ended up being greater than their gross revenue, so thus they have no net proceeds to be taxed. So I hope that was the answer to your question, Assemblywoman.
Yes, thank you. So it's 42 out of the 104. Currently, their cost to do business, and I'm sorry if I misunderstand how this works, but their cost of doing business is more than they make in net proceeds? Is that how it works out?
Yeah, and I'm not trying to be, you know, critical. I'll just want to be semantically correct here, that you use the term "cost of doing business." What I literally have to say is that the statutorily allowed deductions that the mine is allowed to take under the provisions in NRS 362 end up being greater than the gross proceeds that they generated from the minerals that they extracted, able to sell. So I realize that cost of doing business and those deductions, there's clearly a correlation, possibly a strong correlation, but cost of doing business could be a broader concept, right? Because there may be additional expenses or things that an operator could incur that may not be allowed to be a deduction under the net proceeds of minerals tax. So all I can factually state is that the deductions that are allowed under the net proceeds of minerals tax that are currently in statute, those deductions end up being greater than the gross proceeds for 42 of those 104 mines.
Thank you. Can I follow up, Chair? So if we have 42 that are currently not paying net proceeds for the reasons that you stated, so we have, and my quick math is 62 left, so if we have data on those 62 left, did we break those down individually to see what the impacts of this new tax structure would be on those mines? the impacts of this new tax structure would be on those mines individually to, to really look at the impact for equity? Would they, you know, would one be affected more than another?
Again, for the record, Russell Ginnan. Sorry, I just, I'm trying to catch my thoughts That I don't know that I was, went through and actually did the analysis to say, well, what would be the impacts on them? That's a hard question to answer, but I think clearly that when I do the estimates and then the numbers that have been discussed with you, it was going through and applying the 7.75% rate to the gross proceeds reported by those mines, but did I go back then and try and compare that to each one of that, what they're paying under the current, and what might be the impact? No, I can honestly state at this point in time, I haven't done that, and that would be actually somewhat of a difficult analysis for me to perform. If what you're asking is, besides those, clearly those 42 that had zero net proceeds are clearly going to pay tax now because they had gross proceeds. Also, there could be some of them, mining operations that, right, the additional amount of tax paid from the 7.75% would, could be closer or greater than the amount of net proceeds that they had under the current tax.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I just had a question based on the question my colleague asked. So just for my clarification then, there are 42 mines who are reporting a net pro, zero net proceeds. Does that include negative proceeds? Net proceeds?
What, and for the record, Russell Ginnan, that, what it does is I'm reporting the tax basis. So what, what could happen is the, the actual math that would occur is, I'll just do a hypothetical. So you had $10 in gross proceeds and you had $100 in deductions. So you would actually, the math is you'd have 90, negative $90 in net proceeds, but you don't get like a credit. So what it is for a tax purposes basis, you report zero net proceeds, and thus you don't pay any tax because you had zero net proceeds. So I hope that some woman that was addressing your question. If not, please let me know.
Yes, it was, and so, just to be clear then, just because a mining operation is reporting a zero net proceeds or a negative net proceeds doesn't actually mean the mining operation is losing money. It could in fact still be making money and making a profit, correct? Is that, am I getting it correct?
Again, that's one of those questions that it's difficult for me to answer as your legislative councilor staff, because again, all I can talk about, literally, is that the mining operators are required under the law, well, to file a tax return, and then they're required under law to make certain deductions and then subtract that from their gross proceeds to get the net proceeds and then pay the appropriate tax on that. So again, I, I don't do the books for the mining industry to know that those statutory deductions are, there's other ones that they may be taking for the purposes of reporting profits in terms of accounting principles to do an income statement. So I realize that may not be the answer that you want, but it's the best answer that I have. But I can only talk about deducting the statutorily allowed deductions from gross to get to net. I can't talk about whether they may or may not be profitable yet just because by looking at those net proceeds numbers. I don't have that information to that.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, and with that, I would open it up, and this is with respect to AJR-1 and SJR-1. I'm, well, I'm going to open it up for testimony and opposition, but again, I had indicated to the Mining Association an opportunity for them to be heard and also to be able to answer questions on behalf of the industry. So if we could queue up Mr. Gray, if he, do we have a question now, or for Mr. Gray? So can everybody light up now if they have questions before we switch the IT? So now as well? Okay, Assemblywoman Cohen?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I do have a question for Mr. Gray. My question's for Mr. Gray? Mr. Gray, my question's for Mr. Gray.
Okay, Assemblywoman Titus.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Tyree Gray is the president of the Mining Association, and that is who we're currying up, so is he available? I think...
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, but you guys keep lighting up, and I don't know if your question is for them or to, for Mr. Gray.
Well, I think if Mr., if you'll take this now, I think our fiscal analysis, it's really what the person I can ask this question of, because I've been sitting here looking at this bulletin of minerals for the state of Nevada, the Net Proceed Mineral Bulletin from 2019, 2020, and, and here I'm seeing, Mr. Ginnan, that there's 491 mines that actually have paid taxes, and in that, during that year, 491 mines, a total of $122 million, but, and that was just on the net proceeds, and then there's royalties that they paid, and then there are operator tax that they pay. Do you have a, another 113 millions, and that was only 103 mines? So I'm not sure we're all, we're talking apples and apples here, and we may be talking about different types of taxes on this industry, and I'm just curious, in this particular bulletin, there's a number of different taxes they pay. Do you have, and you know, there's a net proceeds, county tax, state tax, combined tax, royalty tax, et cetera. Do you have a total on what the mining industry pays and a breakdown such that I'm looking at, so we could have a better estimate on what this industry actually pays in taxes?
Let me attempt to answer the question, and if I miss some of it, let me know. First, I think it's worth pointing out that, so, so those people that are going to start looking at the Net Proceeds of Minerals Bulletin, there's a little bit of information you should have to be able to read it. So you were probably looking at page 10 of 69, and you see, yes, 491 operators, but if you look at the top of that table, it says operators and royalties combined. So then if you flip to the next page, you see just operators. That's the 103. That's one different than the 104 I am, and I guess, now going from memory, that I have 104 in my database, but I think one of them ended up not reporting anything. So thus, that's probably taxation's filtering that one out, and that's the difference to go from 104, 103. Then if you flip to the next page, you see 388. That is the royalty recipients. They're not mining, they're, the mines are, the mining operators are paying royalty proceeds to those royalty recipients, those 388 entities, and then there's the 5% tax that's due to be paid by the royalty recipients on the royalty proceeds that they receive.
Okay, great. Thank you, that is exactly what I'm looking at.
Trying to answer that part of the question or the observation.
Great, thank you. That was indeed the page I was looking at. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We are going to ask for VPS to connect Mr. Gray, and in the meanwhile, take a brief one-minute recess, and hopefully Mr. Gray will be tied in. The committee hold will come back to order. Again, I believe that Mr. Gray is available and queued up. Can you hear me, Mr. Gray?
I surely can, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, again, Mr. Gray, I'm going to allow you an opportunity to provide testimony as to your position on AJR-1 and SJR-1, but then I'm also going to allow for any members that have questions specifically of the association to then ask those. So if you want to get your two minutes in with respect to your objective testimony, and then we'll go to questions if they have them of the industry.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good evening. My name is Tyree Gray, T-Y-R-E-G-R-A-Y, and I'm the president of the Nevada Mining Association, representing 550 members who occupy every link in the mining supply chain. I would like to take a minute to talk to you about what mining means in Nevada. The mining industry has been a vital part of Nevada's culture and economy for over 150 years. Mining continues to be a proud part of the silver state today, responsible for nearly 37,000 jobs spread across all 17 counties near Nevada. Not only does the industry provide the highest-paying jobs in the state, it always, it always has provided sick leave and health insurance for its employees, thereby lessening the strain on Nevada's safety social net. Further, mining has a safety record few if any other industries can match, and has long supported Nevadans in need. But what we're here to talk about tonight are AJR-1 and SBR-1. So let's talk about taxes. To be clear, mining operators pay all taxes, fees, and charges imposed on businesses generally. Again, mining pays all the same taxes as all other businesses, modified business tax, property tax, sales and use tax, and yes, commerce tax, as well as this industry-specific tax, which is the subject of AJR-1 and SBR-1, the tax on the net proceeds of minerals, which is a property tax on the value of the minerals in the hands of the extractor, not an income tax, as Nevada does not technically have a personal or business income tax. At present, Article 10, Section 5 of the Nevada State Constitution requires that mining operations be taxed on the net proceeds at a rate not to exceed 5%. AJR-1 proposes a restrict, a restructuring that would seek to repeal and replace the existing constitutional construct with a tax of 7.75% imposed on the gross proceeds of mining operations. To our knowledge, there are no other states that tax on the pure gross proceeds of mining. The result of this change would be significant. Under the existing construct, Nevada's net proceeds of minerals tax, as testified by Mr. Ginnan, roughly generates $123 million. For Mr. Ginnan, under the revised construct, it would have generated an estimated $607 million in the same year, a more than 382% increase, taking the effective tax rate on the net proceeds of minerals, from 4.9% to nearly 24%. Yet, this number assumes that Nevada mining operations would not be affected by the proposed increases, which is frankly unrealistic. Restructuring of operations would have both economic and fiscal consequences for Nevada, most particularly in rural communities. Mining accounts for over 37,000 jobs, both direct and induced. While direct employment equates to less than 2% of Nevada's overall employment, it accounts for a substantially larger share in many rural counties. Downsizing or restructuring one or more mining operations in these areas would be disruptive to the host community, and for some mines in the area, the impact could potentially be devastating. Mining accounts for 90% of the jobs in Eureka County, 62% of the jobs in Lander County... Mining accounts for 90% of the jobs in Eureka County, 62% of the jobs in Lander County, and over 30% of the jobs in Pershing, Esmeralda, White Pine, and Humboldt Counties. If the proposed tax increase results in material changes to mining operations, the fiscal implications to mining-dependent rural communities also have the potential to be destabilized. While the net proceeds of mineral tax accounts for only 1.2% of the state's general fund revenues, taxes generated directly by mining operations, including net proceeds of minerals, sales and use tax, and ad valorem, known as property tax, account for much more than 60% of rural communities. To give you an idea, Elko, Eureka, Humboldt, Lander, and Nye County all receive $224 million in tax revenue generated by the mining company. It is unrealistic that increasing taxes from $123 million to over $607 million on a single industry and in many ways a single taxpayer would result in no change to investment or operation. Our estimates show that if Nevada's mining industry contracts by 10%, in which case the state would expect a revenue increase of only 373 and a loss of jobs of 3,700. At 30%, the annual revenues would fall and decrease to $250 million and a job loss of 11,000 jobs, equating to lost salary of $917 million. And as Mr. Gindin has testified, 42 of Nevada's 103 mines are not profitable. Therefore, these mines would likely go out of business. To provide context, the Nevada Commerce Tax, which is a tax on all businesses, including the mining industry, with transactions over $400 million paid, the original projections by the Economic Forum was for $220 million in year 2020 with an effective tax rate of .15%. Today, Nevada's mining tax equates to effective gross receipts tax of 11 times higher than that. AJR-1 would impose a tax rate 53 times higher than the average commerce tax rate with the intention of generating nearly three times the amount of the money generated by the state's broad-based business tax. Thus, the mining industry, one industry, would be paying three times as much as all businesses within the state. Further, consider Nevada's modified business tax, which is paid by tens of thousands of businesses in Nevada, including the mining industry, which was projected to generate just under $700 million. AJR-1 and SJR-1 intend to generate nearly $600 million from 100 active mines operating in Nevada. In closing, mining is here for Nevada and happy to be part of the solution to help Nevada get through the current hard time. Yet AJR-1 and SJR-1 amount to an unfair share. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Gray? Assemblywoman Titus? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've had my questions answered. Thank you.
Assemblywoman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Gray. So as my colleague from Assembly District 27 stated, we've got a lot of data that we can look at. So looking at the net proceeds of minerals bulletin for '19 and '20, which I'm sure you don't have in front of you, and I don't expect you to be able to reference, I do want to ask you a question about the 20-year history of net-to-gross ratio. It's kind of shocking because over the last 20 years, there's just this huge jump in the differences each year and the fluctuation between net-to-gross. It goes from a low of 18% to a high of 46% from net-to-gross. Can you address that and give us any indication as to why that ratio has such an extreme fluctuations?
For the record, Tyree Gray with the Nevada Mining Association. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Cohen. I do apologize. I do not actually have that bulletin in front of me. What I can say is that operations come online from time to time. So there may be an opportunity for a mine to have come on property or come on to actually creating a proceeds that creates some fluctuations. So mines may A) open and mines may close, therefore creating some fluctuation in what you see, or B) expanding or creating additional investments, if you will. So again, I do apologize. I don't have that bulletin. I was not prepared to speak to that. But maybe your fiscal staff can actually opine.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if any of them do have any ideas, I'd appreciate hearing if Mr. Gindin perhaps does have an idea.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to respond, or will you just like to wait till Mr. Gray has completed his section?
If you have a perspective, Mr. Gindin, please go ahead and answer.
I would probably side a little bit with Mr. Gray that to go just look at the net-to-gross ratio historically over all the different types of mining that are occurring, you would need to dial back and look at some of the detail. As he stated, you could have mines coming online and mines coming offline. You could also have new mines coming online versus older established mines. And I think it's been stated here, right, that there's capital investment that goes into getting mines going, or they have to buy additional equipment. So, right, when you have a net tax and you have deductions, then that's going to put more volatility in a tax just by the nature of it being net. But when I looked at the chart, because I pulled it up when it was referenced, that I would speculate that one of the other factors that has to be taken into account here, that again, the major mining mineral in the state in terms of the proceeds and net proceeds and the taxes paid is gold. And so when I look at that period where you see the line going up in 2010, 11, 12, and then it's coming down, right, gold prices tend to be countercyclical. So what was happening there? We had the beginning of the Great Recession. And so I would argue that might have done some of that. And then you had it settle back down, and then it's come back up a little bit. And so it'll be very interesting to possibly see what happens when they report for calendar year 2020, given what's been going on with gold prices for the first half. So again, that would be my speculation is that part of it is you got to look at what's going on economically, but also mines opening and closing and what those mines might be doing in relation to expanding, purchasing equipment, but also what's going on with the gold price. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Assemblyman Ellison.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I've got a real short one. Could you repeat Nevada mining? Could you repeat how many people could be laid off under this? You just had a number. It was 11,000 or something like this. Could you repeat that number again? Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Yes. Tyree Gray, for the record, through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblyman Ellison. By the numbers in which we have been able to calculate, we ran our own numbers, we are able to say that at a 10% constriction of the industry, we'd be looking at about 3,700 jobs lost. At constriction of 30% of the industry, we'd be looking at 11,180 jobs lost.
Assemblywoman Bill Bray-Axlrod.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Gray, for being here tonight. I have a question. Let's just, I'm going to try to make it super simple. Let's pick the top three grossing mining companies, which I'm sure you're very familiar with because they're the ones who pay the bulk of the bill. Are they located in Nevada or in the United States?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Bill Bray-Axlrod, for the record, Tyree Gray with the Nevada Mining Association. I am unclear as to what you're asking, so I will state the question, I will state the answer as this. The mining industry employs and has headquarters here and obviously has employees here and have offices here in Nevada. And so if you're asking whether or not all of these companies are solely domiciled within Nevada, that would be a difficult question to answer. But they are subject to Nevada taxes. They employ Nevada citizens, and they support all Nevadans.
Follow-up, Chair, if I may?
Follow-up.
I guess I'm just trying to understand, and I understand that companies have, like Bank of America has many branches throughout the world, but we can pinpoint where Bank of America's headquarters is. So if we look at the, let's just pick the three largest mining companies. Are their headquarters in Nevada or in the United States?
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association, for the record, through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Bill Bray-Axlrod. Again, Assemblywoman, I would say that they have operations here in Nevada. And in regards to who the three largest are at the moment, I do apologize. I do not have that bulletin in front of me. But I am happy to get that information back to you if there's an opportunity.
Let's just go with Barrick off the top of my head.
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association, through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Bill Bray-Axlrod. I believe that Barrick, who is a partner in a joint venture called Nevada Gold Mines, Nevada Gold Mines actually is the operator here in Nevada. Nevada Gold Mines, I believe, is headquartered here in Nevada. Barrick itself, I am not certain that it is headquartered here in Nevada, nor within the continental U.S.
Thank you. And if you could give me that information, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Assemblywoman Titus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the acknowledgement and able to ask a question. Mr. Gray, and thank you for being here, and I know it's late at night. One of the things that people keep focusing on seems to be gold. And obviously, gold right now in our current economic situation is doing very well. But I want to ask some questions about the many other minerals and other mines that we have in our state. And wondered about those companies that aren't so profitable, that operate on such a small margin. And when you talk about closing, the reality is true. I know in my own district, I have a copper mine that's been trying to get started for about 15 years, and it's always seems to be based on the price of copper, and their margin of victory is very, very small. But in addition, in my district, I have companies that produce cat litter. And they produce, that's diatomaceous earth, and they produce gypsum or drywall for housing, et cetera. And as these bills go forward, if they do go forward, and the cost of doing business is more, as we all know, as a cost of doing business in any industry, you have to charge more. Do you have any estimate or any insight onto what the possible is? And we always talk about affordable housing. And I have some concerns about the impact on, potentially on even such things as cat litter. Do you have any estimate on if that would indeed be true?
Tyree Gray, the Nevada Mining Association, through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Titus. To your question, I'll kind of break that down into different parts. So A), minerals that are commodity traded, there is no opportunity for them to adjust their price. These prices are set outside of their control. So in other tax structures where there's an opportunity to actually pass the tax to an end user and/or a consumer, the mining industry here in Nevada doesn't have that opportunity. So when you look at an increase in the cost of doing business, and again, as we know, the net proceeds has deductions or computations that are permitted within NRS 362. Not every line item in the cost of doing business is deductible. NAC 362 actually has a list that is equally as long that speaks about the items that are not deductible. So when you look at the deductions and you're not actually seeing the actual cost of doing business, you're only seeing the statutorily allowed deductions. So to your question directly, those mines that are operating on a very tight margin that do not have the opportunity to pass on a cost will likely go into care and maintenance, which means a slowdown, or frankly, shut.
Assemblywoman Monroe Moreno.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Mr. Gray, for being here so late in the evening. As I've sat here listening to the conversation, I have just a few questions. And the first one is you've mentioned in your response to the questions from my colleagues from Assembly District 33 and 38 that there would be a number of jobs that would be lost if this legislation were to be passed. But you did not explain to us exactly how you calculated and came up with that number. Could you please share with us how you got to that number?
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association, through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Danielle Monroe Moreno. Briefly, in the calculations of those numbers, we have been able to rely on our financial experts to run those numbers for us. And those numbers are calculated based upon the idea that, as Mr. Gindin has testified, there are 40 mines that are not profitable, are not paying net proceeds, if you will. And due to that, when you actually apply an additional tax on those mines, but that additional tax is actually on every dollar that comes in, we can project that there will be businesses that go out. And so we're able to make estimates, educated estimates at that, of what the potential job loss would be based upon industry contraction.
Follow-up?
Follow-up.
Thank you. So, and thank you for that. So with the educated estimates, are you saying that there have not been any of those mines that you mentioned specifically said that if this legislation were to pass, that they have indicated to you or your membership that they would actually be laying off any of their employees? These are just an estimation and calculations?
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association, through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Danielle Monroe Moreno. No, we do have anecdotal accounts, and again, they're based on hypotheticals from our membership that have made projections of employee separation and/or closure due to this bill.
Thank you for that. And then also in conversations throughout tonight, I've heard that sometimes mines change what they're actually mining for, what the minerals are that they're mining for. And because of that, there may be a mine that closes for a temporary period of time, then reopens later on. And in doing that, they may have layoffs. When you discuss or in your calculations of the layoffs and the numbers you presented tonight, did you also take into consideration the mines that may be closing down in the normal course of business?
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association, through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Danielle Monroe Moreno. I am not sure that I testified or that somebody else testified to mines changing what they may actually unearth. Throughout the process, there are byproducts- Throughout the process, there are byproducts. And again, I am not a expert in the actual mining operations or the metalworking, if you will, but there are byproducts. And sometimes if you're mining for, per se, gold, you may have copper or silver as a byproduct. But I am not aware of a mine changing its principal metal in which it is extracting from the earth.
And thank you for that. I'm sorry, maybe it was not mentioned specifically here and during the mine tour that I took, and it was amazing. And what you just said was exactly what they said during that tour. Mines are there to make a profit, and if a mineral is not making as much money as it was a year ago or five years ago, then the mining industry would focus on the materials, the minerals that are going to make them the most profit. So I think that's where my question would be. If the mine and their main industry or main mineral that they were digging for this year or last year was not as profitable, would they be laying off as they change what mineral that they would be digging for that would be bringing in the highest profit? And on top of that, there's a number of minerals that can't be mined anywhere else or limited around the country that they can only do in Nevada or have the largest amount of those minerals in Nevada. So would they close simply because they would have to pay a little more taxes to the state of Nevada, knowing that they couldn't produce or create that money anywhere else because they couldn't dig for that mineral anywhere else in the world? So would they close down simply because they would have to pay a higher tax to the state of Nevada? I hope that makes sense.
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Danielle Monroe Moreno. If I understand your question, I'm going to rephrase it just a little bit. If the mine is not profitable, will it lay off people, essentially, is what you're asking? If I think that's correct, then my answer to that would be yes. In the course of the price of the commodity that goes up and goes down, we know that one of the corporations, Barrick in fact, that was cited earlier, nearly went bankrupt in 2015 due to the low price of the mineral in which it was mining. And again, mines do not have the opportunity to pass on any cost to an end user. As such, it is important to recognize that if they are no longer profitable, then regardless of if there's a belief that the mineral is only here, then they must, they will likely
Thank you for that. So, and this is my last question, I promise, Mr. Speaker. As long as the mines are profitable, even with the passage of this legislation that would incur a higher tax amount, as long as the mine was profitable, there would not be a reason for them to lay off any of their miners or any of the staff because they would still be a profitable company that would just be paying a higher tax amount. So therefore, there truly wouldn't be a need for any layoffs, as I understand it.
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Danielle Monroe Moreno. In the hypothetical, your question is whether or not a business would undertake layoffs in order to, even if they were profitable, if they were less profitable. And that's a business decision that unfortunately might vary from mine to mine. What we're concentrated on here is frankly that there are a number of mines that are not profitable that would essentially be shuttered. And then there are other mines that may be profitable that in order to make up for that profitability, or if there's something, I mean, from a management perspective, and again, those are operation decisions that unfortunately I can't speak to, but essentially, like any other business within the state of Nevada, when they are unprofitable, they either lay off staff or they close.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now go to Assemblywoman Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for legal and then a question for Mr. Gray. I think it was Mr. Fernley, if you're still there. Is there, following up on the concern that my colleague in District 34 has about where businesses' headquarters are, is there anything in Nevada law or the Constitution that mining headquarters in order to do business in Nevada, or even any other companies like the Raiders Organization, or Tesla, or Google, or Amazon that have a presence in Nevada? Is there anything in Nevada law or the Constitution that says your headquarters must be in the
No, 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 there isn't.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Gray, those companies, whether they're headquartered in Nevada or not, how many of those mining company, how many employees are there in Nevada that are employed by mining in the state?
So, Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Hanson. We have numbers that we consider to be direct and indirect and induced. So the total direct and induced number is 37,000. The total direct number is just around 14,000.
Thank you for giving me both those. You might have mentioned them earlier, but I missed it. And then there are, we have several oil mines here in Nevada. Are any of them headquartered in Saudi Arabia?
I'm going to assume that was rhetorical, Assemblywoman, Assemblyman Levitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gray, I'm assuming you've done some research on the various impacts on mining, but have you, did you look at or estimate outside of mining, what impacts would be, for example, heavy equipment that it's used? I know that, I don't know of any mines that are, that are close to my district, but I do know a lot of heavy equipment, either rental places or sales places. Do you have a gauge or an estimate on other impacts that would occur if there was some detriment done to the mining industry?
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblyman Levitt. We, again, use the direct and induced job numbers. So by, I do not have an exact figure, but what we can say is that pretty much for every direct job that there is in the mining industry, there's roughly 1.7, 1.8 additional jobs that are induced by the mining industry. So if you are to assume that 10 jobs go away in the mining industry, then you can take that same assumption, say, in between 15 and 18 jobs may go away in the induced market.
And so when you talk about other jobs or induced, induced jobs, those are in areas that are not specifically around mines, right? So Clark County could be affected, even though they may not have a direct correlation to jobs in the mining industry?
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblyman Levitt. Assemblyman, your assumption is accurate. As you know, the mining industry depends on vendors, depends on retailers across the state of Nevada. As you referenced there in Henderson, when you're driving down St. Rose Parkway, you'll see Cashman Caterpillar. Cashman Caterpillar is a large vendor in the mining industry. Again, these trucks, haul trucks cost $5 million. Tires can cost anywhere from 600, excuse me, from $60,000 to $100,000 apiece. And so all of the vendors that the mining industry does business with are not located inside of the rural communities. Many of the architects and accountants and lawyers, they all are located either in, many of them, I should say, are located in Washoe County and Reno and in Clark County throughout Las Vegas and Henderson and North Las Vegas areas.
Assemblyman Ellison?
Mr. Chairman, if you'll let me ask another question. I know this is a hypothetical question. You probably can't answer it because you haven't been there that long, but I remember when, when gold dropped about $1,200 an ounce, people saying, well, they still got the gold in the ground. It doesn't matter. That is a world commodity. That, that price is, is done by the markets all around the world. It's just not something in Nevada or anywhere else. And I think a lot of people get confused with that. But the mines did their hardest to keep everybody going as much as they could. But they could at that point in time start laying off, but they did not. Some were more prepared than others, but isn't this a world market? It's not a Nevada market. Gold is actually on the trading, and that's where that price come from. Is that correct? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblyman Ellison. Assemblyman, your statements are correct. They're accurate. The price of gold is not something that is controlled here in Nevada, is not something that is controlled by the mining industry. It is controlled mostly by the London Stock Exchange. So it is an international price, regardless of where you reside or where you are in the world, the price of gold is uniform. As such, when the price of gold goes down, the operations generally do their best to continue, hoping that the price will then go above whatever their cost per ounce may be. And so there are times where a mine will actually operate, and I think we have proof of that, in not being profitable, in order to just continue cash flow, in order to make sure that it makes payroll and keeps its people employed, hoping that the price of the commodity will shift up, and then they will have an opportunity to return to generating
Assemblywoman Swain?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick question for you. I know this kind of goes back to what the Assistant Majority Leader, Majority Leader were talking about, but I was looking at the dates between 2013 and 2014, the price of gold, so looking just specifically at gold mines, dropped by about 25%. So looking at the numbers that you gave us before, we should have, somewhere in the neighborhood of just under 11,000 jobs lost in Nevada during that period. Did we see that happen?
Tyree Gray, President of Nevada Mining Association. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Assemblywoman Swain. Again, I do apologize, I'm not familiar with that structure. Again, as reference, I have been on the job about six months, but I'm happy to find that information for you and forward that if there's an opportunity to forward this message.
Thank you. I would appreciate that because I'm looking just at, generally, that was a pretty big drop for gold. And so it would help us to be able to kind of ground these more theoretical numbers you've given us, and we can look at what actually happened between 2013 and 2014. So lost, you know, somewhere around 10,000 jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions. I do appreciate your being available, Mr. Gray, given your position. Of course, we do have another item on the agenda that I would like for you to remain available, if that's possible. But I am going to now go on to ask BPS to get ready for those wishing to offer testimony first in support. Recognizing that we are addressing both AJR-1 and SJR-1 at the same time, I'll provide some latitude for folks that may have a different position on each, but I will go ahead and open it up now for folks on, in the queue wishing to offer testimony in support.
Good evening. We will start with testimony in favor of the bill. If you are for the bill, please press star nine now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. Again, please press star nine now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. Caller with the last three digits, 510, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Lillith Barran, L-I-L-I-T-H-B-A-R-A-N, and I am for AJR-1. This is really confusing to go through. I'm not a miner of any kind in the future, but I know that sometimes our funds are allocated out of the same thing. I've just seen some numbers about this year that we've seen a 55% profit increase in the last two weeks, and are expected to trade gold at $3,000 an ounce by October 2021. And right now, we're trading it at 1,700. I'm just kind of wondering from my perspective, like, what it would look like if we ran tools while we're running mines, and, and kind of seeing that an equal cut is not being shared here. And I would like to see a little bit better done. As far as things, this being an international commodity and this being an international good, I would also like you to consider children and adults in higher education as also an international commodity and an international good that are like the gold of your state that also needs to be taken care of and sheltered and lobbied for in the same way that we are lobbying for gems and minerals and cat litter. I would like us to strongly consider the idea that perhaps commodities can also take human form, and that maybe not all commodities are to be supported and funded in our state are made of raw or taken from.
Ma'am, we're at two minutes. If you could start to wind down.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 486. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Hi, good evening. Alexander Marks, A-L-E-X, A-N-D-E-R, N-A-R-K-S, Nevada State Education Association. I will keep it brief because I know we have some folks on the call, members. AJR-1 is a good bill. You should pass AJR-1, and then you should pass it again in 2021, and then we will pass it in 2022. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 586. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Carmen Andrews, C-A-R-M-E-N-A-N-D-R-E-W-S. Good evening, Speaker of the House, and I see members of the Assembly. I'm the Vice President of NEA of Southern Nevada. I'm speaking in favor of AJR-1. AJR-1 would provide a new funding stream that education and other vital health and human services desperately need. Mining does not pay its fair share in Nevada. We will continually fall short of our goal of adequately funding Nevada education without new revenue. Help ensure better educational equity by moving closer toward adequate funding by supporting AJR-1. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 130. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening. Christine Saunders here on behalf of the Progressive Leadership Alliance in Nevada. As these are two separate bills, we have two stances. in Nevada. As these are two separate bills, we have two stances. We are in support of AJR-1 and neutral on SJR-1. Just weeks ago, you heard over and over again from Nevadans demanding that the legislature take bold action and reform our state's revenue system by making mining pay their fair share. At that time, the price of gold had skyrocketed to 1,800 per ounce, but since then, it has only continued to increase, recently reaching over 1,900. Just weeks ago, we also decimated the state's budget with severe cuts to healthcare and education. We had the option to prevent some of these drastic cuts, but did not. Assembly Joint Resolution 1 will put this issue to the voters where they can clearly show that we need to hold mining accountable and fund our state's social services and education, and I urge your vote on this resolution. However, as for SJR-1, we are neutral. In this pandemic, we have no doubt supported regular cash payments on the federal level, but we fear potentially trading these, what could be small payments for the future environmental protection, including saving our water and our lands from toxic hard rock mining. However, we look forward to work out a policy from these multiple options that delivers funding to public programs and our social safety net and has the mining industry pay their fair share into the state budget. Again, we are in support of AJR-1 and neutral on SJR-1. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, four eight eight. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Coleman, C-O-L-E-M-A-N. First, I want to state how impressed I am with our Assemblywoman tonight with a heart fitting question, A+. I am inferring, although the speaker said it was a rhetorical question, that Nevada is connected to mining companies in Saudi Arabia. Yes, we have a world market in the London Exchange. That's the type for gold, yet 80% of the world's gold is mined in Nevada, and Nevada's gold is least funded at county and state levels compared to all other states in our country. I am an educator at Echo Lotte Elementary in Washoe County. I'm a U.S. Air Force veteran, and I'm a member of ENT, and I am calling in strong support of AJR-1. I would like to thank the Nevada mining industry for giving me hope for the long-term sustainability of healthy school funding sources throughout the state of Nevada, which would especially mitigate funding volatility in Washoe County. As you all know, education in our state has been chronically underfunded and defunded for decades. We need all industries in Nevada to be supporting our public schools if we are truly wanting to remain Nevada strong. Thank you, Governor Sisalat, for doing what needed to be done with COVID and closing schools to mitigate a crisis. I pray those of you who have the power will please give us something to be proud about in regard to school funding formulas and resources. Nevada continues to be the bottom of national rankings based on how poorly our school funding formulas are at the state level. I truly hope you will do the right thing. America is divided. Let's keep Nevada united. You lead us. We are counting on you to do the right thing. God bless our country, our miners, and the amazing state of Nevada.
Caller with the last three digits, zero seven four. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
My name is Brian Green, B-R-I-A-N-G-R-E-A-N. I'm a resident of Assembly District 32. I grew up in Elko and received my undergrad from Great Basin College and have worked at many mines in the state. I support the bill. When I was part of the system of higher education, I had a meeting with the late Dean Rhodes in 2008, or maybe 2009, saying we needed to tax mining. I went to high school that received motor coaches from the mines. I went to a college for my undergrad that the mines paid for an amazing facility for the electrical program. The mines treat local communities like rich parents who donate a lot of money to a college to get their kids in, but worse, because they exploit the college kids while the burden is put on the student and the person who is part of the program pretty much has to work at those mines after graduating. The mines have not paid their fair share with an antiquated amendment in the Nevada Constitution, much like the sugarbeets part in the Constitution being antiquated. Most counties don't get generous donations from the mines, and what happens when things like Dayton or Yerickton occur, nobody is going to foot the bill to clean up after them. I know there is a fund for reclamation, but what stops them from filing bankruptcy and not reclaiming the mine? What stops them right now from polluting with state travel restrictions with NDP? Geothermal is also extremely inefficient. Most plants barely break even. We have one right outside Lovelock that has never worked. I would also like to further that, further what I said, Assemblywoman Ellison should not even be taken as a person who should be followed, as I watch him benefit financially from the mining boom, since he owns numerous rentals and rent became outrageous in Elko.
Sir, we're at two minutes, so if we can wind down.
And the mines didn't invest in infrastructure.
Sir, can you hear?
Okay. Yes, I can. The last part I want to put is while he was the county commissioner,
sir, I need you to speak to the bill and not make any personal attacks on any member of this body.
Caller with the last three digits, three five eight. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Selena LaRue, S-E-L-E-N-A, LaRue, L-A, space capital, R-U-E. I'm a teacher and a member of NSCA and WEA, and I am calling in full support of AJR-1. This measure is so long overdue and clearly popular with Nevadans, as evidenced by the thousands of emails, hundreds of protesters, hours of public comment, and overwhelming poll results you have all received. And of course, it's popular. The mines in Nevada make a fortune from our resources while paying a pittance in taxes to support the state that makes those profits possible. It is time that they start paying their fair share in this state, just like the rest of us. We are in a time of crisis, a time which demands sacrifice. Healthcare workers, educators, and essential workers are sacrificing their very lives in order to keep our communities safe and functioning. We are asking that mining corporations share in that sacrifice to keep our state healthy. If we can sacrifice our health and safety, it seems a small ask that mining corporations sacrifice a minuscule portion of their record profits in order to fund the vital community services of education and healthcare. In this state, we are too often quick to cut our most essential community programs, but slow to ask the mega-rich to chip in even a small amount. Education cuts are second nature. Mining taxes are foreign. This is wrong. This is backwards. This is harmful. It is time to abandon these devastating budget balancing measures of the past and seek a new path in which all Nevadans are doing their part to improve our state, in which all of us are sharing in this sacrifice and not just the most vulnerable. I urge you to pass AJR-1. It is easy for this body to vote for devastating cuts to education, to ask educators and children to sacrifice even more in the name of community, but will you be just as quick to ask a multi-billion dollar industry to chip in a little bit, too? Thank you.
Caller with the last five digits, excuse me, three digits, five seven seven. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Chris Bailey, C-H-R-I-S-D-A-L-Y, Nevada State Education Association, the voice of Nevada educators for over 100 years. NSCA strongly supports AJR-1 to generate critical new revenue for Nevada by increasing the mining tax from 5% of net proceeds to 7.75% of gross proceeds. NSCA also appreciates that in AJR-1, 25% of dedicated revenues could be spent for educational purposes. On the first day of the previous special session, hundreds of educators donned red face coverings and lined both sides of the streets from the Legislative Building to the Capitol with the clear call to fund healthy schools. We chanted, "Be brave, be bold, new revenue is the way to go." Educators mobilized for new revenue as the governor presented hundreds of millions of dollars in painful cuts, including $156 million in cuts to K-12 public education. Unfortunately, the effort to amend mining tax deductions was blocked by a minority of the legislature. We are now left with education cuts into the bone, including class size reduction in programs for our most vulnerable students, like weighted funding and read by grade three. Now just days away from back to school, we know how difficult the planning has been heading to the start of the new year. Whether districts are going back to distance learning, a hybrid model, or reopening buildings trying to follow the state's health guidelines, additional resources are necessary to safely get kids back to school. Unfortunately, those resources are just not available. On the other side of this current crisis, Nevada is the world's fifth largest producer of gold, which hit a record high of $1,931 an ounce earlier this week, yet the mining industry pays very little in state taxes. AJR-1 would generate nearly half a billion dollars in new revenue for Nevada. It's the right-sized treatment of an industry that has enjoyed a sweetheart deal since Nevada's beginnings. The proposal is also significant enough to move the needle on the chronic underfunding of Nevada's schools and other vital health and human services. Be brave, be bold, pass AJR-1. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, one five five. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Christy Cabrera, C-H-R-I-S-P-I-C-A-B-R-E-R-A. I'm here on behalf of the Nevada Conservation League in support of Assembly Joint Resolution 1. Mining operations have significant environmental impacts that exist long after mine operations have ceased. The current system allows too many very profitable mining companies to pay very little or nothing at all for the resources that they take from our state. AJR-1 would change this calculation and would allow Nevada to be better compensated for these natural resources. Our state spends less than 1% of our general fund on conservation and environmental protection. Passing AJR-1 will allow Nevada to better invest in the protection of our special outdoor spaces while also providing funding for other critical programs. It's time to make mining pay their fair share. We urge your support on Assembly Joint Resolution 1. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, one seven nine. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening, Mr. Speaker and members of the committee. My name is Michelle Booth with Educate Nevada Now, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E, B-O-O-T-H. In our work, we're often looking at revenue and resources for our K-12 public schools. You often hear that Nevada ranks towards the bottom in funding and frequently receives an F. What you may not be as familiar with is the breakdown of that ranking. One of the critical components of that rating is effort. Per the National Report Card, Nevada receives an F for effort. Effort measures the differences in state spending on education relative to a state's fiscal capacity, and this measures gross state product and personal income. Not only does Nevada get an F, it is also in the bottom five states in effort. That means that we could do more, but we've chosen not to. To put that in perspective, New Mexico, Arkansas, and Mississippi, which all rank towards the bottom in achievement and funding, actually get an A in effort. Nevada has always been known for its low taxes, and unfortunately, it shows. It shows in the inadequate resources in our schools, inaccessible healthcare, and other critical resources that define a state's quality of life for its residents. It's time to show we care and put forth the effort and vote in favor of AJR-1. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, five four one. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening, Assembly Committee as a whole. My name is JD Klippenstein. That's J-D-K-L-I-P-P-E-N-S-T-E-I-N, and I am the Executive Director of Action at Grassroots Community Organization in Washoe County. I just want to echo the sentiment of many of the previous callers, and also add that while we are strongly in support of AJR-1, the theoretical conversation that we've been having this evening, I think, forgets the fact that we're talking about a constitutional amendment that would have to go through another session and then be voted on by the people. And I would ask that you would trust Nevadans to choose the well-being of their neighbors over corporate welfare, that rather than being concerned about our constitution protecting a particular industry, that we would, that you would let us decide how those resources are used to benefit our community. So, and I urge you to support AJR-1, and I hope that we can continue to move in the right direction. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, eight nine three. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening, Assembly Committee as a whole. My name is Marisol Montoya, M-A-R-I-S-O-L, M-O-N-T-O-Y-A. I'm supporting AJR-1. I'm a lifelong Nevada resident. My grandfather actually worked in the Gypsum Mine. Somebody had previously talked about the effects of mining and the devastating impact it has on the environment. It also has a devastating impact on the miners' bodies themselves. The least we could do as Nevadans is take the money that these mines generate and reinvest it into our schools. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, four eight eight. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening, Mr. Speaker and committee. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Jennifer Cantley, J-E-N-N-I-F-E-R-C-A-N-T-L-E-Y. I am a born and raised Nevadaan and a resident of Assembly District 39. I am an environmentalist activist in Nevada and a mother of three beautiful boys that many of you know in this room. Not only do mining companies not pay their fair share in taxes, but also leave their messes behind that have created three super fun sites in three rural communities. One in Yerickton, Nevada, that was number seven for worst cleanup for the entire country, and that residents that are in Yerickton have been on bottled water for 15 years, and many of them of the Paiute tribe. Who is paying for this cleanup? Yes, Nevada tax dollars. I thank you for staying up late, and I'm thankful for the AJR-1, because this can create more revenue for our state and our counties during COVID-19 and put more money into our schools that are in desperate need, and this is in need well before COVID. We have been at the bottom of list, of the list in education, since I was a student at Douglas High School, and my kids deserve better. I thank you for your time, and I ask you to vote yes on AJR-1. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, zero three nine. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
My name is Erica Minnabery, that's E-R-I-K-A-M-I-N-A-B-E-R-R-Y, and I am calling yet again as a fourth generation Nevadaan. My children are fifth generation Nevadans. And quite frankly, for all of us native Nevadans that are listening on this, we are sick of Republican representatives complaining about Californians coming in from out of state while protecting out-of-state businesses. We are struggling here in Nevada right now. I am so sick to hear you guys scramble to find reasons why this bill will negatively impact Nevada, when there is already negative impacts happening to Nevadans right now. That's all I got to say. I really wish my time.
Caller with the last three digits, seven nine two. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
This is Patrick Donnelly, P-A-T-R-I-C-K-D-O-N-N-E-L-L-Y. I'm Nevada State Director with the Center for Biological Diversity. We strongly support increasing taxes on mining. Mining causes significant negative impacts to Nevada's waters, public lands, wildlife, and communities, and they make off like bandits, paying a paltry sum back to the state that gives them so much. And we agree with the framework in both bills of tax and gross proceeds. You've heard plenty about why we and every other progressive group speaking here tonight support AJR-1, and we support AJR-1, but we are opposed to SJR-1. And I appreciate the leave of having multiple positions in one testimony. I'm going to focus a bit on SJR-1 here, because it's a very stark difference from AJR-1. The utilization of the mining revenue in SJR-1 is a dividend, and this dividend is really poorly thought out and misguided, and it will not improve the quality of life for Nevada. We heard here tonight that it would be $90 per person based on 2019 revenues. That's $90. Now, $90 isn't going to go very far to pay bills for most Nevadans. It's not food for a week for a family. It won't pay the rent. But combined, all that $90 is pooled together, that's $270 million. That's teachers in classrooms. That's healthcare for economically disadvantaged Nevadans. That's real money which could fill a vital role. That's real money which could fill a vital role in our state budget. Meanwhile, handing out checks from the mining industry will only serve to enhance their political power over the state. Mining already has an inordinate influence over the state. Allowing them to make direct cash payments to Nevadans will create a perverse incentive for the state to strip away environmental regulations, worker protections, or any other laws which the mining industry might view as impeding their ability to make money. We need more environmental regulation and worker protections over mine, not giving them a bunch of free political capital to get their way. Handing out checks for ninety dollars to Nevadans might sound nice, but it will not make a material difference in people's lives. It would be a waste of an opportunity to make mining pay its fair share.
Sir, if you could wind down, we're beyond two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, one eight one, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Lalo Montoya, L A L O, M O N T O Y A, Political Director at Make the Road Nevada, and we are in support of AJR one. The small businesses who are our state's economic drumbeat are hurting while the mining companies continue to thrive. Nevada is better than this. We must do better, and so must the mining industry. It is time for mining to pay its fair share. Our healthcare and education system depend on it. We urge you to vote yes on AJR one. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, eight three one, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening. I'm Cecia Alvarado, C E C I A, A L V A R A D O. I am the Nevada State Director for Mi Familia Vota, and we are in strong support of AJR one. I just want to say ditto to all the testimonies and thank all the teachers and NSDA for coming forward to support and fund education in Nevada. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, eight nine eight, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin. Caller with the last three digits, eight nine eight, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
For the record, my name is Annette Magnus, and I'm the Executive Director of Battleborn Progress. I'm here today in support of AJR one. This bill is closer to what we have been asking for the past several years, and we are excited to have this option potentially for the ballot. I'm also here tonight in a neutral position for SJR one as a native Nevadan. I believe that all revenue options are critical for our state to have on the table. However, we are concerned about this option and the potential environmental impact that SJR one may have in our state as we have seen a history in Alaska that has shown abuse in systems like this. We thank you all for keeping all of these revenue options on the table, and we would like to have further conversations about both of these bills. We all agree, mining must pay their fair share, especially at a time when they are doing better than ever, and that corporate welfare of any kind should not be allowed in our state. We appreciate the efforts on this bill, and we look forward to further discussions on AJR one and SJR one. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, five four zero, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
So you can call that thing twenty-four hours a day?
Caller with the last three digits, five four zero, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
If we could move on, BPS.
Caller with the last three digits, three eight nine, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
You know, we can put that money and put it into making sure that this shit doesn't happen again. Yeah, I don't know, man. I mean.
Yes, can you go ahead and go move on, BPS?
We are currently taking calls. For those in favor of the bill, please press star nine to raise your hand to get placed in the queue. We are currently taking calls. For those in favor of the bill, please press star nine now to raise your hand to get placed in the queue. Caller with the last three digits, nine six three, please state and spell your name for the record. You, Mr. Speaker, that caller dropped off. We have no more callers in favor of the bill.
Thank you. I'll now open it up for people wishing to offer testimony in opposition.
Okay, we'll go back to those that have just currently raised their hands for in favor of the bill. Caller with the last three digits, nine six three, please state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? My name, hi, my name is Sonia Moya. I am a member of the Women of Color Las Vegas Group. I am here in favor of AJR one. I believe that we need to stop taking money from our children and from folks' healthcare. We need to make sure that mines are taxed, and we need to be able to trust the community to know what to do with this money. I urge you to please allow the Las Vegas community and Nevada community to please vote on what kind of taxes mining should have in Nevada and to get rid of the protections that they have in the Constitution. Thank you.
If you are against the bill, please press star nine now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. Again, if you are in opposition of the bill, please press star nine now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in the queue. Caller with the last three digits, six nine two, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Hi, for the record, my name is Michelle, M I C H E L L E, Mosley, M O S L E Y. I call in opposition of AJR one. You guys cannot rob Peter to pay Paul. It is not fair to our miners and our communities that you have singled out a one industry to make up for the shortfall. Our miners work hard daily. The mines support the rural communities, not only in schools, but every single event they have, as well as the Boys and Girls Club. It's not fair for you to single them out and make them pay more taxes. You want to lay off? Well, what about the failing BETR, the Dieter? What are you going to do then when they can't claim unemployment because of the failing system? Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, nine six nine, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Brian Wachter, B R Y A N, W A C H T E R. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Assembly Committee in the whole. My name is Brian Wachter, and I'm the Senior Vice President at the Retail Association of Nevada. It's no secret that mining is literally the bedrock of Nevada's rural communities. We don't have to search far and wide to see an example of what happens when a bedrock part of the community disappears overnight. In Clark County right now, our tourism economy is gone, and with it, thousands of businesses are closed, and hundreds of thousands of Nevadans are out of jobs. But what happens in Vegas is not likely to stay in Vegas if you vote yes on AJR one. And eventually, on the day that this becomes lost, up to more than forty mines may close overnight. The closed stores and restaurants that litter Clark County will become commonplace in other counties as workers who once made ninety thousand a year are suddenly forced to retrain for jobs that don't exist. The small businesses that have thrived, meeting the needs of these communities, will wither. We also need to manage expectations on what these joint resolutions may mean. We've heard a lot of estimates based on the 2019 numbers, but over the last seven years, in the last, or five of those seven years, the price of gold was closer to twelve hundred dollars an ounce, which would mean that the math on SJR one would go to fifty-five dollars, and the math on AJR one would be closer to eighty-eight million dollars. To attempt to solve Nevada's revenue problems and address the hundreds of lines of NRS that need to be reviewed in order to do so cannot be adequately addressed in the hours that this body will take to deliberate on this measure. The Retail Association strongly urges the body to vote no on AJR one and SJR one and to then seriously begin working on Nevada's revenue structure. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, five four zero, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin. Caller with the last three digits, five four zero, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
If we could move on.
Caller with the last three digits, zero eight zero, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Susan Fisher, S U S A N F I S H E R, with McDonald Crohn's. Speaking on behalf of Nevada Mineral Exploration Coalition, N M E C, and Cirque Nevada, that's C Y R Q. We oppose both AJR one and SJR one because this rush process without full data is not the appropriate way to initiate a constitutional change. This is not just about gold, silver, copper, or lithium. It's also about silver, or silica, gypsum, magnesium, geothermal energy, and heat source, DE, borax, sand, DG, gravel, and all the non-sexy stuff with a very low profit margin. These are resources used every day in many homes and commercial processes and construction, and some of the latter are sourced in Clark County. These resolutions will most surely increase construction and housing costs because if you shut down local sources, then it has to be shipped in from outside Nevada. Both N M E C and C Y R Q Nevada are made of a geologist who spend years looking for marketable resources. If they find a viable resource, then they spend years wooing international investors to pump millions of dollars into the Nevada economy to fund testing and claim costs. N M E C has already seen a marked investment impact and loss due to the worldwide pandemic. If they claim proves up, then there are more years of public hearings and environmental permitting before extraction and production. If it's that important to examine a future constitutional change, please wait until you have more information. If you want to push the RPS in Nevada, if you want to push energy battery storage, then I beg you, pump the brakes on this. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of N M E C and Cirque Nevada.
Caller with the last three digits, zero zero four, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. This is Dagney Stapleton, D A G N Y, S T A P L E T O N. I'm the Executive Director of NACO Nevada Association of Counties, and our opposition today is based specifically on Section 5.2 of the resolutions, the language that would eliminate the portion of net proceeds that go to Nevada's counties. As the resolutions are written, they remove all of the net proceeds revenues to counties. For some of Nevada's rural counties, net proceeds are one of their primary revenue sources. We appreciate during the committee's discussion earlier that there was mention of the assumption that the legislature would make the counties whole or replace this revenue. However, as the bills are written, there is no language to that effect and no other bill that would do that at this point. And so what we wanted to make sure to put on the record tonight was how the resolutions would impact counties as written. Counties currently, like the state, are seeing significant reduction revenue, including seat tax and other revenues. To also take away net proceeds for some counties would impact the broad range of services that counties provide and what they pay for with their net proceeds, including emergency response, services fifteen years, and the indigent, and critical county infrastructure. Counties did submit fiscal notes on this bill, but I wanted to provide just a few specific examples of what this would look like for some of the rural counties. For Humboldt County, which has a relatively diverse local economy but still a large mining base, in 2019, twenty-one percent of their total revenues came from the net proceeds tax. Elko County also relies on that proceeds. The county's fire district, which provides local fire protection to a large area that has seen increasing wildfire threat to local lives and properties, rely, receives seventeen percent of their funding from that proceeds. In FY 2021, White Pine County will depend on that proceeds revenue to make up fifteen percent of their general fund. And finally, Lander County received fifty-five percent, over half of their total revenue, from that proceeds in FY eighteen, and thirty-eight percent of their revenue from that proceeds in FY nineteen. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak on this bill, Mr. Chair.
Caller with the last three digits, five eight zero, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening, Mr. Speaker, members of the Assembly. For the record, I'm Paul Enos, P A U L E N O S. I am the CEO of the Nevada Trucking Association. We have over five hundred and fifty members located in every community in the state. And I will say, while this pandemic has had quite an uneven impact on all my members, of course, my folks that are serving the casinos and all those small businesses that closed down, they were hurting. My folks that were servicing the mines and those places in rural Nevada that were still operating, they were doing a lot better. I will tell you, I think everybody in this state should love an industry like mining. They take care of the environment. And I know we heard about environmental degradation, but I don't know of one other industry that has done more for wildlife conservation, whether it's elk, or mules, or ducks, or trout, or sucker than the mining industry. In terms of their employees, they take tremendous care of their employees, and I can say that as a third-generation Nevada, born and raised in Elko, raised by a gold miner. When I was born, we lived in a single-wide trailer with the tip out, a block away from the brothels in Elko. My dad was able to matriculate up through the company, and I was able, both my sister and I, to graduate from college debt-free. Pretty amazing thing. That's something that we all want, for everybody in this state, to be able to have that kind of opportunity. And in terms of the economy, the mining industry, of course, trucking is a big part of the mining industry in rural Nevada, but it's also the restaurants, the retailers, the car dealers, the hotels, the casinos, the hospitals, all of those folks out there that are in these other industries that are sustained because of the mining industry. You know, we talk about the fluctuation and the net proceeds taxes. That happens, absolutely. It happens because mining is making investments. Whether it's a new mine, a new pit, a new underground mine, a new mill, those investments come back to the community in terms of other taxes.
Mr. Enos, if you could wind down, we're beyond the two minutes.
All those other ancillary revenue that comes into the state, yeah, it may not be in net proceeds, but it does come in other means. Hey, they may be buying new trucks that are going to be taxed on sales taxes, on GST. That is something to stake at the benefit from too. My old man started working the car and train in nineteen seventy-one. He went to work when gold was thirty-eight dollars an ounce. And hey, when it was nine hundred and fifty dollars, when Jimmy Carter was president, that was a big deal. I remember in the late nineteen, when gold was under three hundred dollars an ounce. That's when my dad left Nevada. He went to Indonesia because the economics in the state of Nevada did not work as well. I will tell you, if SJR one or AJR one passes, we are going to see.
Mr. Enos, can you hear us?
Caller with the last three digits, seven eight two, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Eva Owshon, E V A O W, S as in Sam, I A N. I am a miner's wife. Both of my children work in mining. I am so sad that there is such a mis-education to everyone. They do not destroy the environment. I, I just can't believe that no one really understands the mining industry. They do pay their fair share in taxes. We pay our fair share in taxes. And sadly, everyone who thinks that this money, if it passes, will go to schools, you are sadly mistaken. As a longtime Nevadan, I, I am originally from North Las Vegas. The money has not gone to education this entire time that I've been alive, and I'm. education this entire time that I've been alive, and I'm 60 years old. Please do not punish our miners because you have legislation, you have certain people that cannot get the budget correct. Please, I am so against this bill, you have no idea. Please get your budget correct. Get the education out there about where this money goes. Educate yourself. And one more thing, John Ellison, you know how much I love you. You do so much for us and everybody in Nevada. Thank you. Have a good evening, and thank you for working hard.
Caller with the last three digits, one two four, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Committee of the Whole, Paul Moradkhan, M O R A D K H A N, Senior Vice President of Government Affairs with the Vegas Chamber. Regarding A J R one and S J R one, the Vegas Chamber's opposition to both of these resolutions. This is an industry-specific tax, and we've learned several times in the last few decades that relying on specific industry sectors makes our tax base more vulnerable and less diverse. This is a significant tax increase, and we urge you not to pass either one of these resolutions in an economic crisis. We do believe that if these resolutions are passed, that good-paying jobs in this industry will be lost, and that will directly impact Nevada's families and those communities that need those jobs. The year reported just this week, the regular initial claims are up by 18%, and Nevada's insured unemployment rate is 24.9%. We believe that this resolution will negatively impact several counties and impact our residents as well. We cannot afford to lose more jobs in this pandemic crisis. We are also opposed to any lowering of a tax rate that requires two-thirds vote. This is an unprecedented change in state tax policy, which will harm all Nevada businesses. During this economic crisis, we cannot stress enough that employers need support, and this type of tax policy will have opposite effects. It will have a negative effect on employers and employees. Nevada's businesses are the economic engine of our state. Just this week, it was reported by the federal government that gross domestic product fell by 34.3% or $2.15 trillion. Sustainable taxation should be broad-based, so the burden is fairly shared. Industry-specific taxation is volatile and not the way to go. We of the Vegas Chamber support the important services such as education, healthcare, but doing so without careful and thoughtful analysis leave our state and community without a stable base for these services. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Caller with the last three digits, one three six, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Thomas Erwin, E R W I N. I'm a resident of Reno, Nevada, having lived here since 1964. I'm a practicing lawyer. My clientele is primarily mineral exploration companies and mining companies, currently exploring for minerals in Nevada, and some of my clients are in production. My perspective on the bill is a bit different than others. The sensitivity of the mineral exploration industry to changes in tax structure, financial structure, legal structure is high. Companies favor Nevada. It's the third highest ranking site for mineral exploration as ranked by the Fraser Institute, the Canadian think tank. And one of the reasons for that is transparency, a legal system that works, and stability of legislation. I can tell you that this type of resolution with an arbitrarily selected tax rate, that is probably close to 10 times as high as the tax rates of other states, which you can review in the General Accounting Office 2019 report that I posted to the Committee of the Whole. If you look at mineral tax rates of other states, they range from 2% to maybe 3.5%. But some of those tax rates allow deductions. They are not purely gross tax rates. The fixed rate eliminates the flexibility afforded to the legislature to address changing conditions. We know how hard it is under the current constitutional scheme to change taxes to increase them. This bill will make it just as difficult to reduce them to reflect any changes in the industry. I agree with the sentiments that education in Nevada is underfunded. I felt that for decades. I think it's unwise to raise expectations that a volatile industry can provide a stable source of income for the long term. The prices of minerals vary. In 1979, the gold price was at 850, and in 1997, it was 250 or thereabout. Annual gold production in Nevada is generally declining. So placing your bet, use the Nevada term, on high gold prices and high gold production is not a good bet.
Sir, could you wind down your two and a half minutes?
A more thoughtful and reasoned approach based on fact might result in a better bill.
Sir, please.
Where the industry and others have more time to analyze the facts, including the financial and tax information.
Sir.
And just from putting on my legal hat, I see some deficiencies in the bill, lacking critical definitions, including the term minerals. There was a question asked, would this apply to all minerals in Nevada?
Caller with the last three digits, zero two zero, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
My name is James Waddhams, J A M E S W A D H A M A S, with the law firm Black &amp; Labello. I am here tonight representing Newmont in opposition to both A J R one and S J R one. Newmont has been in Nevada since 1965 and is currently a minority partner in the Nevada Gold Mines joint venture. Newmont, along with the industry, has responded to prior requests to find ways to raise additional money to support Nevada in a way that allows the business operation to continue, saving jobs and production, so the likelihood of the tax revenue could be sustained. Newmont is opposed to this resolution as it sets a tax burden at a level at which business is not sustainable. Never have we seen a tax increase of this magnitude in any jurisdiction and one directed to just a single industry. This increase is over 300%. In the past, Nevada has called upon mining to help when the general economy was down. The level of this burden will eliminate that counter cyclical balance point. Unless Nevada diversifies its tax base, it will remain heavily dependent upon our hospitality and tourism economy. The Great Recession, and now the COVID-19 pandemic, have shown us how dangerous single industry taxation is. This measure, these measures, would make that dependency even greater. Article 10, Section 1 was amended in 1989 to allow mining to be taxed at a much higher rate than other property in the county. That change was reflected to raise additional money. While Newmont has other serious concerns about the language of the bill, due to the shortness of the permitted time, I will conclude. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, three zero eight, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good evening, Mr. Speaker, members of the Committee of the Whole. For the record, my name is Andrew McKay, A N D R E W, M A C K A Y. I'm the Executive Director of the Nevada Franchise Auto Dealers Association. Many of my concerns and comments have already been hit upon by prior speakers, but I would like to indulge you just briefly to raise a couple of the reasons why we stand in opposition to both A J R one and S J R one. As alluded to prior, we have serious concerns with respect to any measure that is an industry-specific tax. We believe that's counterproductive to the intents of the legislature to attempt to broaden the tax base. A concern related to that is, is what happens when, in this case, the price of gold, which everybody is talking about, but many other minerals that are out there, when they drop off, and then they plummet? We believe, in fact, this is going to exacerbate potential budget shortfalls. And then what is the legislature going to be tasked to do at that time? With respect to Nevada dealerships, our dealer members, those members that are automobile, light truck, heavy-duty truck dealerships as well, serve thousands of employees in the mining industry and depend upon their business and the business of the mines as part of their customer base. We strongly encourage you to vote no on this measure. We believe the timing of it is poor, and I thank you for your indulgence, and I guess more appropriately, I guess it's good morning now, so thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, nine six four, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Assembly Committee of the Whole. For the record, Mary Walker, M A R Y W A L K E R, representing Lyon County. I do rise in opposition to A J R one and S J R one. We are very concerned about the potential loss of good-paying jobs in our communities and harm to our rural economy. In some rural counties, mining is the only industry we have. And when you think about it, if mining wasn't there, what would replace it? I don't know. For over 150 years, these rural counties have relied upon mining revenue to fund local services to their citizens, and that revenue was guaranteed in the Constitution. If one of these bills go through, there is no longer that guarantee. I do sincerely appreciate the comments made tonight on the Assembly floor and yesterday on the floor of the Senate regarding keeping rural counties whole if one of these bills do move forward. And in particular, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for your comment tonight regarding keeping the rural counties whole. I do look forward to, if this bill, one of these bills do move forward, I do look forward to working with you, your members, our rural representatives, to ensure the rural local governments will be held harmless. Thank you very much for your time.
Caller with the last three digits, eight five nine, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Janine Hansen. I'm the State President of Nevada Families for Freedom. I'm a native Nevadan, the mother of 16, and I need to spell my name, J A N I N E H A N S E N. I also live in Elko, and I greatly appreciate my personal Assemblyman, John Ellison. We oppose both A J R one and S J R one. Mining paychecks allow families to take care of themselves, and they are not a burden to the taxpayers. Consider, as stated by Mr. Gray, that the loss of 11,000 jobs means a loss of $917 million in salaries for families. We need to protect mining, to protect jobs, to protect families, to protect independence and freedom, and not create more government dependence. There will never be enough money for the failed government education. Freedom of choice in education is the only answer to the spiraling cost of education and to increase student achievement. Don't destroy families in the rural communities. Don't put 11,000 people out of work. Don't make rural counties dependent on Las Vegas tax dollars. Don't turn the Constitution on its head by eliminating a two-thirds vote required to pass a tax on mining to a simple majority, and then require a two-thirds vote to reduce the tax. This is absolutely perverse. It is not fair to tax on gross revenues. It will hurt all Nevadans because many businesses, even in Las Vegas, do business with the mines. This is a very ill-conceived constitutional amendment, and it should be defeated. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, three three three, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Morning. My name is Chris... Thank you and good morning. My name is Christina Erling, C H R I S T I N A, E R L I N G, and I represent Barrick and Nevada Gold Mines. I am calling in opposition to A J R one and S J R one. Nevada Gold Mines has a direct workforce of more than 7,000 Nevadans, based in rural Nevada where there is little alternative employment. They have highly compensated jobs with health and retirement benefits for them and their families. We employ thousands more indirectly, either through our contractors or local supply chains. Many of our employees are third-generation miners. This state, at least the rural north, has been built on mining. As a joint venture between Barrick and Newmont, we've been a proud partner with the state of Nevada for decades and will continue to be so, not only through our local communities, but as a partner for the entire state. Our community efforts and contributions focus on education, environment, healthcare, food security, and Native American programs throughout Nevada. We see it as our duty in these challenging times to provide immediate support to the state. We are proud that in Nevada's time of crisis, we have been there to provide that support where others couldn't. We have contributed both financially and logistically to Nevada COVID-19 Task Force, specifically as the largest single donator. We also recently launched the I A D Fund, designed to help small businesses along the I A D corridor recover from the effects of the pandemic, thereby relieving the state of an additional burden. We are the largest taxpayer in the Nevada mining industry. As you know, the health of the mining industry is counter-cyclical to the economy. We do well and make significant contributions during crises when the rest of the economy is struggling, as we are experiencing now and have experienced in the past. Commodities are global and cyclical. We cannot pass on higher taxes like other industries do. In order for us to be there the next time there is a crisis, we need a viable, profitable, long-term industry, and A J R one and S J R one will severely impact the mining industry's ability to do so. The mining industry is here for Nevada. We want to and are willing to contribute more. We have been at the table to discuss how we can help. Please work with us, not against us. Thank you for your time.
Caller with the last three digits, six four seven, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Marcos Lopez, M A R C O S L O P E Z, Americans for Prosperity in Nevada. Thank you, Chairman and members of the Assembly, for the opportunity to testify. Good evening, comrades listening in. On behalf of more than 50,000 Americans for Prosperity in Nevada activists, I urge you to reject S J R one and A J R one. All of these proposals make worse or continue the terrible tax policies of our state. It is poor fiscal policy to redistribute wealth like S J R one proposes. The mining industry should be taxed for pulling resources from the ground. However, how we do that is very important. We should not be moving from taxing net proceeds to gross proceeds like both of these legislations propose. This ignores the business's profit and expense and could lead to a nonprofitable business still having a state tax liability. This is bad policy, just like the Commerce Tax. We need to stop coming up with tax schemes and focus on the inequalities in our current tax code. Having a tax cap is just as bad as having a tax minimum. We need to stop trying to weaken, find workarounds, or tinker with the Givens Rule that was overwhelmingly passed by Nevadans as well. Good tax policy is simple and transparent, neutral and equitable, predictable and permanent. Nothing about these proposals or the current system meets where we should be. Nevada needs comprehensive tax reforms that keeps to these principles and eliminates target industry taxes. We need to stop favoring industries, and we need to stop targeting them. We need a tax system that has a broad base and has low rates with very little exception. Our current budget crisis has been supercharged due to our over-reliance on these industry-specific taxes. That means we need to repeal the mining tax and the gaming tax and move to a better system of broad base and low taxes. While we don't endorse everything, a solid framework to start and build upon was put together by the Tax Foundation in 2015. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you vote to reject both these proposals.
Caller with the last three digits, zero six five, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Corey Christensen, that's C O R Y, C H R I S T E N S E N. My children are fifth-generation Nevadans. Their ancestors were here before Nevada was even a state. I'm calling in opposition to A J R one. The process this bill has gone through, to be heard, has been a total disgrace. This bill should not be heard in a special session. This isn't related to COVID. This isn't in response to an emergency, and there should be time for proper analysis and for Nevadans to be able to address their representatives at the legislature in person. Mining was asked what analysis they had on mines going out of business earlier. There has been absolutely no time for them to, for the mining companies to analyze and report back their findings to the association. It was a ridiculous question. Legislators are being asked to vote yes for the bill so you can go in and analyze what impact might be after it's already passed? Obviously, that's a terrible way to pass legislation. Contrary to what has been assumed by many, there is not anything that directs this money to education. Education is just like the bell Pavlov used on his dogs. You claim harm or benefit to education for any bill that you guys want to jam through. The special sessions are the worst form of governance in a complete farce. Thanks for my time. Thanks for my time.
Caller with the last three digits, one six six. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Barry Duncan, B A R R Y D U N C A N. Barry Duncan. Mr. Speaker and members of Assembly, Barry Duncan on behalf of Nevada Taxpayers Association. The membership of the NTA opposes adoption of Assembly Joint Resolution One and Senate Joint Resolution One. Given that the mining industry is essential to the financial health and well-being of families and counties throughout the state, it is our contention that increasing the rate and changing the calculation method for taxes on mining operations could lead to severe economic consequences for various counties and the residents. An additional concern pertains to continued funding for local governments and school districts as the revenue generated from mining is critical to the budgeting and debt management of these entities. Additionally, the NTA opposes the constitutional changes pertaining to the two-thirds majority requirement in both, in Section Four of this bill. We also oppose the section pertaining to the alteration to a two-thirds requirement for increasing of a tax, of the tax, excuse me. Finally, with the high fixed capital cost of opening and operating a mine, the changes to mining tax, tax policy contained in this legislation is likely to burden future investment and growth in the industry. I thank you all for your time and consideration. Have a good evening.
Caller with the last three digits, seven eight one. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Nick Vanderpoel, N I C K V A N D E R P O E L. Good morning, Carson City. Mr. Speaker and members of the Committee as a whole. For the record, Nick Vanderpoel with Capital Partners, partners calling this evening on behalf of the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce to oppose Assembly Joint Resolution One and Senate Joint Resolution One. The first level of opposition is that the Chamber's Board of Directors has approved a public policy platform which opposes singling out any specific industry for taxation. As a state is attempting to recover from this pandemic, we should be supporting industries who are providing exceptional jobs versus targeting them. The mining industry in Nevada operates in all 17 counties, and there are direct and indirect economic impacts that the industry plays to Nevada's revenue stream. An industry that is a commodity easily has economic ups and downs. What happens when the price of a commodity actually drops to a level that is no longer profitable? The operation shuts down, jobs are lost, lives are disrupted, and communities are confused. The proposed language in AJR one and SJR one frankly is not good policy, and now is not the appropriate time to be having this conversation, when an industry that is providing good-paying jobs should be the number-one opportunity that this body should be celebrating. We know each of you are working hard and making tough decisions, but the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce and its 2,000 members do not support AJR one and SJR one. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, three two four. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
My name is David Hornsby. That's D A V I D H O R N S B Y. I'm the President and Chief Operating Officer of Empire Mining in Empire, Nevada, which resides in Washoe County, Northern Section. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Assembly, for allowing me to speak tonight. We're calling to voice our opposition to both AJR one and SJR one. It has been a little over four years now since my partners and I purchased the mine, the plant, in the town of Empire, Nevada from United States Gypsum, which had operated since 1905. At the time we purchased the property, USG had shut down operations six years prior, leaving a ghost town for the areas of Empire, Gerlock, and the surrounding regions in Nevada. Since that time, the impact of the mine has led the Gerlock's K through 12 schools to grow from four students to over 20 full-time students. At times, there's been as many as 30. The town of Empire is thriving once again. We have over 50 employees with an annual payroll of over $5 million. We provide excellent benefits, health insurance, dental insurance for our employees. In addition, we annually spend in excess of $25 million in Washoe County with vendors and other businesses. We do pay more than our fair share of taxes. The gross proceeds tax on our particular industry is completely unsustainable. Almost no business can sustain this. Our industry operates on much lower margins than some of the larger precious metals mines. We have experienced a large influx of material being imported from Mexico into the coast, and gross proceeds tax, as proposed, would render us uncompetitive in the marketplace. This would absolutely, no doubt, lead to layoffs, if not a complete shutdown. We support initiatives that are fair and apply to all businesses' industries equally in Nevada. Thank you, and please stop AJR one and SJR one before they kill one of Nevada's greatest successes, the mining industry.
Mr. Speaker, there are no more callers in the queue for opposition of the bill.
Any in a neutral, anyone in a neutral position?
If you are in neutral of the bill, please press star nine now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. For those of you in neutral of the bill, please press star nine now to raise your hand, and we will take your call. Caller with the last three digits, three four five. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Committee. My name is Tim Crowley, T I M C R O W L E Y. I apologize, I'm actually calling in opposition to AJR one and SJR one.
Well, Mr. Crowley, if you could use the email address and email your opposition. Obviously, the hour is late, but we want to make sure that we are treating everybody the same, and there are people that just called in, and there are other people that have been waiting for a long time to get on the record. So if you could lodge your opposition in writing with the email address on the agenda, then we can move on with the folks that are in a neutral position.
Mr. Speaker, there are no more callers that have raised their hands that are in a neutral. Oh, I take that back. There is one more. One moment, please. Caller with the last three digits, eight three zero. Please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Hi, my name is David Mendoza, D A V I D M E N D O Z A, and I'm neutral on this issue, but I do want to state that everybody should be listened to with regard to this issue. And right now, it seems like there are more people in opposition to the bills, and it's late. I know everybody's tired, but I just want to say that everybody should be listened to, but right now, it does seem like the majority is in opposition. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Speaker, public comment line is now empty for those calling in neutral position.
Thank you very much. We will bring this back to the Committee. I was going to call for a one-minute recess, but we have discussed powering through, if that's the desire of the body. We will then call and open the hearing on AJR two. Welcome, Assemblyman Watts, to introduce AJR two.
Check. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members of the Committee, for the record, my name is Howard Watts. I represent Assembly District 15 in Las Vegas. I will be as brief as possible in presenting Assembly Joint Resolution Two, and then I can answer any questions that folks have about intent, although I think any questions that remain on this issue may need to be directed to staff for clarification on fiscal or legal issues. Assembly Joint Resolution Two briefly just provides another potential option for having the mining industry contribute its fair share in revenue. It amends, proposes to amend the Constitution in Section Five of Article 10 to modify the cap on net proceeds from 5% to 10%. And it also adds a line codifying the current statutes in terms of the minimum rate being the tax rate levied on property in the taxing district where the extractive operation is located. So with that, I'll take any questions again on intent and leave it to you, staff, to answer any questions about legal or fiscal issues.
Thank you, Assemblyman Watts. If I may, Assembly Joint Resolution Two represents an effort to collaborate with the mining industry for compromise. And so this is, in its simplest terms, a reflection of an olive branch with the industry, with some serious work that's done, been done to get to this point, simply raising the cap from 5% to 12%, leaving it in the Constitution with net proceeds. The other, the other adjustments that could and have been contemplated are statutory. So we're talking about the constitutional part, and then concepts of providing protection to those mines that bring in less than $20 million is contemplated as part of that negotiation, as well as a way to bridge us to the constitutional amendment with a desire to have a negotiated agreement, if possible. So while we have talked about mining tax over the last couple of bills, I think that we've been saturated with the policy in and of itself, but there's a desire to have a vehicle in place to provide an opportunity to have continued conversations with the mining industry, and AJR two reflects that effort to collaborate with the mining industry to find some common ground. I will say that, and actually, I'll ask our staff, because I think there's a couple of points that could be made with respect to the differences. And so with that, Assemblywoman Titus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that's exactly where I was leading. Going from a 5% to a 12% tax increase seems exorbitant to me, and I was wondering if Mr. Gendin is still available to give us those numbers and what the difference would be. Thank you.
Thank you. And if Mr. Gendin is still available?
Indeed, I am, Chairman. For the record, Russell Gendin with the Fiscal Analysis Division. Well, Mr. Chairman, I have not run the numbers for everybody trying to go to 12%, because again, when I look at this constitutional amendment, it says it's not to exceed 12%. So unlike AJR one and SJR one, that says it's a rate of 7.75%, unless the legislature takes action to increase the rate or lower the rate, this is basically like the current constitutional provisions that it's not to exceed 5%. And so people, not all the mines are paying the current maximum 5% because of the statutory schedule for determining the rate. And then, so this, to take everybody to 12, if the current statutory provisions remain in place, they would not go to 12 necessarily. It would be up to an act of the legislature to decide what rate would be levied and what rate structure would be in place. So I have not run that. Mr. Chairman, I have, as has been mentioned here a couple of times tonight, ran what it would be for, if consideration was given by the legislature, to put a statutory construct in place where those operators with 20, more than 20 million in net proceeds paid 12%, but everybody else remained at the current statutory construct. And so I could go through those numbers, Mr. Chairman, if that's what you'd like me to do in answering the Assemblywoman's question.
Thank you, Mr. Gendin. I think that would be helpful if you could provide a hypothetical scenario of where we were 2019 in existing law and where we would be if this were in place and if there was an exemption for those making 20 million or less, and what that number would be.
Okay, so my assumption would be that the 12% would attach to those that had 20 million or more in net proceeds. And so I have quickly tried to do that calculation using, again, the calendar 2019 data as the Chairman has referenced. And so just to give somewhat of an idea that the numbers I'm going to give you, I apologize, their totals are going to be a little different than what I was reading, because these numbers now will not include the royalty proceeds, because they're currently taxed at 5%. And so again, the legislature would have to make that decision as if they want to change royalties, where again, SJR one and AJR one would have taxed the royalty proceeds at the 7.75%. So with that as sort of the caveat, then in, under the current constitutional statutory construct, the total NPM revenue from calendar 2019 would have been approximately $113 million, with approximately $60 million of that going to, again, the combined property tax rate entities, that would be the local governments, the school districts, the state debt rate, and then approximately $53 million of that would have gone to the state general fund portion. So that would be about a 53% split to the combined property tax rate and 47% to the state general fund. Sometimes you frequently hear this, that the split is close to 50/50 between the combined property tax rate and the general fund portion under the current statutory and constitutional structure. So then if we would come in and consider a scenario that could be entertained by the legislature to statutorily, if this constitutional amendment were put on the ballot and approved by voters, to only have the 12% rate applied to those operators that had more than $20 million in net proceeds, and again, based on the calendar 2019 data, that would be 10 operators. There's, again, there's only 12 operators in calendar 2019 that had more than 20 million. Two of those are geothermal, so again, I made the assumption that the legislature would leave geothermal the way it was, and so only had the tax, the 12% rate apply to the 10 gold-mining entities that had more than $20 million. So that would have yielded $260 million in total revenue compared to the $113 million that I referenced as the total under the current structure. Again, this is excluding the royalties. So again, this would, there wouldn't be the change at all to the amount going to the locals, and there wouldn't even have to be a discussion by the legislature, because you're not, as you can see in the constitutional amendment, subsection two is remaining in the Constitution. So thus, the locals would still get their approximately $60 million, as I referenced, under the current structure. So then that would mean it would be 100, approximately $200 million going to the state general fund, which would be about $146 million more than went to the general fund based on the current structure. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I hope that addresses your request as well as the Assemblywoman's question.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Follow-up.
And thank you for those numbers. They're appreciated. You mentioned that it would take this body or action to then actually increase this rate if this indeed did pass through the, on the next ballot and indeed passed as is. Would that require a two-thirds vote of the legislators to then increase this, the rate? of the legislators to then increase the rate?
And this is Brian Fernley, Legislative Counsel. If AJR 2 were passed by this, in this session, and by the next legislature, and ultimately approved by the voters at an election, any increase in the tax rate on net proceeds would still require a 2/3. This proposed constitutional amendment in AJR 2 does not contain an exception to the 2/3 requirements set forth in Article 4, Section 18.
Great, thank you, Mr. Fernley. While you're still on there, then, have you seen anywhere in our statute in the past and in history that we've jumped this percent of a tax on any individual industry from a 5% to an increase of a 12%?
I'm not aware of anything like that, no. No, I don't know, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Gendin, could you, I think we just heard Assembly Joint Resolution 1 and Senate Joint Resolution 2. I recall you reflecting a probable revenue based on those two scenarios with a 7.75% tax rate on gross proceeds that was approximately $600 million? Did I recall that correctly?
For the record, Russell Gendin with the Fiscal Analysis, yes, Mr. Chairman, that the 7.75% rate on the gross proceeds, again, we're staying in the same calibration against calendar 2019, would have been approximately $607 million, compared to what I referenced there. This would generate $259, well, basically $260 million in total taxes, again, under the construct of taxing those with more than $20 million in net proceeds at the 12% rate.
And further, and I don't know if this will be a question for Mr. Gendin or Mr. Fernley, but in the past, the legislature has, with respect to constitutional amendments, simultaneously passed legislation that would be in effect in the event that the constitutional measure passed, so that there would be a pairing of the statutory policy and the constitutional provision. Is that something that would be able to be accomplished in this scenario?
Yes, this is Brian Fernley. Yes, there could be companion legislation to this constitutional amendment that would become effective if the constitutional amendment were approved. Yeah, it would become effective on the date that the constitutional amendment became effective.
Thank you. Further questions?
Assemblyman Kramer? Thank you. Any further questions? All right, seeing none. Obviously, we've had a pretty deep session on mining tax, but I will now see if anyone is in the queue wishing to address this. First in support?
We will start testimony in favor of the bill. If you are for the bill, please press star 9 now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. For those in favor of the bill, please press star 9 now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. Caller with the last three digits, 130, please state and spell your last name and first name. For the record, you have two minutes. You may begin.
Good morning. Christine Saunders, that's C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-E-S-A-U-N-D-E-R-S, here on behalf of the Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada. I want to thank the Assembly for taking the concerns of their constituents to hold mining accountable and diversify our state's revenue stream seriously in presenting these multiple options. We look forward to being an active part of the conversation and process with the legislature to have mining pay their fair share and to put Nevada's revenue system on the right track moving forward. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 155, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members of the Assembly. For the record, my name is Kristi Cabrera, I'm here on behalf of the Nevada Conservation League in support of AJR 2. As we said in our testimony earlier, it's time we call on the mining industry to pay their fair share. This resolution creates flexibility to both increase the rate of mining revenue as tax and continue the discussion around which deductions support the values of Nevadans and which do not. We look forward to continuing to be part of this discussion, and we urge your support on this resolution. Thank you.
We are taking callers in favor of the bill. Please press star 9 now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. Mr. Speaker, the public comment line for those in favor of the bill is now empty.
Thank you. I'll now invite folks wishing to offer testimony in opposition to provide their testimony.
For those in opposition of the bill, please press star 9 now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. Those in opposition, please press star 9 now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. Caller with the last three digits, 580, please state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Mr. Speaker, once again, for the record, Paul Enos, P-A-U-L-E-N-O-S. I apologize, I couldn't hear you the last time I got cut off, but we are in opposition to this bill for many of the same reasons stated above. This is a 140% increase. I will just finish my point. When the economics in Nevada don't work, that gold will sit in the ground, and they will go and look elsewhere for it. My dad in 1998 went from Elko, Nevada, to Indonesia because the economics worked a lot better there. If we change the economics for the mining industry in Nevada, we cannot expect it to stay here. Thank you very much. I apologize for not being able to hear you, because I guess there was a technical issue, and I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enos. And we were made aware that you couldn't hear us, so no need to apologize.
Caller with the last three digits, 166, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Barry Duncan, B-A-R-R-Y-D-U-N-C-A-N. Mr. Speaker, members of the Assembly, Barry Duncan, on behalf of the Nevada Taxpayers Association. I don't want to take up too much of your time. Y'all are working late tonight. I just want to reiterate our concerns from testimony on the previous two measures, and also say, we would like to recognize that when assessing a tax in the tax structure, we obviously always support the broadest tax with the lowest equitable rate. And in addition to that, we think it's important when assessing any industry's tax obligations that we look at all the taxes paid, not just an industry-specific tax. Obviously, mining pays all the business taxes that other businesses pay, and we think that's important to keep in mind while you're debating these issues. Thank you again for your time and consideration, and have a good evening.
Caller with the last three digits, 738, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin. Caller with the last three digits, 792, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
This is Patrick Donnelly, P-A-T-R-I-C-K-D-O-N-N-E-L-L-Y, Nevada State Director with the Center for Biological Diversity. While we strongly support increasing taxes on mining, we don't feel that this resolution, AJR 2, is the proper way to do so. Part of the problem with the current way we tax mining is that we are taxing net, and we've had lots of discussion about taxing net proceeds. And this bill doesn't change that. It just changes the math on that. And ultimately, we feel that the current configuration of mining taxes is a structural inequity in our tax system. And the approach of AJR 1, SGR 1, to change it to taxing gross proceeds appears to be a much better and simpler, more straightforward way to address the inequities in our tax system. So don't really support this as opposed to those other bills. And I would say also, we just have to look at this raises far less revenue. It said this was an olive branch to the mining industry, and it's a $347 million olive branch. And we feel like we need revenue in the state at this time, and AJR 1 provides a way to do that, and AJR 2 does not appear to do so. So thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That concludes the callers in that queue.
If we could just wait just a few minutes, I had indication of maybe one more that was having a technical difficulty.
Okay. Apologize. Caller with the last three digits, 859, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Thank you very much. This is Janine Hansen, J-A-N-I-N-E-H-A-N-S-E-N. I am the State President of Nevada Families for Freedom, and I do live in Elko. I am a native Nevadan. I was born and raised in Spark. I also oppose, and our organization opposes, AJR 2. It's incredible to think that someone's taxes would go up from 5% to 12%. What would happen to any individual family or other business which this was imposed upon? It's unrealistic to expect mining to make up for the losses which have happened in our state. It's amazing to listen to this special session and the previous special session and hear the feeding frenzy of those who want more government tax dollars, those who are not producing taxes but are consuming them. It's very important that we support businesses so that they can independently thrive. We are very blessed to have mining in our state and the amount of taxes they pay, the jobs they produce, the families that they sustain. We are blessed in this effort. We would like to encourage you to vote no on AJR 2. And remember that the more taxes that you place on businesses, the less productive they are, the fewer people they hire, the fewer products that they buy, and that it suppresses the whole economy, the more taxes that you put on individual or individual businesses or any broad category. Each individual family pays an average of 50% to 60% of individual taxes in Nevada. They pay more in taxes, in hidden taxes, federal, state, and local taxes, than they pay in education, in health care, in their rent or their home, in their food budget, in entertainment, in anything else. Taxes have become oppressive. It destroys liberty. It destroys choice. It destroys prosperity. The more taxes that you strangle our economy with in the state of Nevada, the more people will do like they've done in California and flee, now that we've become East California. It's very detrimental to our economy, to the people in our state, and to our children. And I'm very concerned about that, because I do have 16 grandchildren. Thank you for your time, and I would ask you to oppose AJR 2.
We are currently taking calls. For those in opposition of the bill, please press star 9 now to raise your hand to get placed in the queue. Caller with the last three digits, 080, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
This is Susan Fisher, S-U-S-A-N-F-I-S-H-E-R, with McDonnell Corrano, representing Nevada Mineral Exploration Coalition, and also DIRQ, Geothermal Nevada. I'm just asking you to put the brakes on this. Pump the brakes. This is just crazy to push through a constitutional amendment without having the ability to have full public comment. It's almost 1:00 in the morning. And you think we've got full public comment? We don't. And we need more input from your wonderful LCV staff who have not had the appropriate time to fully investigate and research the information. I trust what they bring to you, and they have not had time to bring to you the correct information. So thank you.
Mr. Speaker, there are no more callers in the queue in opposition of the bill.
Might there be any callers in the queue wishing to offer testimony neutral?
For those in neutral of the bill, please press star 9 now to raise your hand, and we will take your call in order. For those in neutral of the bill, please press star 9 now to raise your hand, and we will take your call in order. The caller with the last three digits, 898, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
For the record, my name is Annette Magnus, and I'm the Executive Director of Battleborn Progress. I am here today in the neutral position for AJR 2. As a native Nevadan, I believe that all revenue options are critical for our state to have on the table. We thank you for keeping all of these revenue options open, and we would like to have further conversations about all of these bills presented this evening. We all agree mining must pay their fair share, especially at a time when they are doing better than ever, and that corporate welfare should not be allowed in our state in any form. We appreciate the efforts on this bill and the others, and look forward to further discussions as we approach the 2021 session. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 738, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker and members of the Assembly. This is Tyree Gray, T-Y-R-E-G-R-A-Y, President of the Nevada Mining Association, representing 500 members. The Association rises in neutral on AJR 2. AJR 2 represents a good-faith effort to find a mechanism to preserve the current net proceeds tax and hold the local governments harmless. Yet it bears mentioning that the top rate would increase taxes by 140%. This is a large jump and could threaten smaller operators and upstarts like Lithium Nevada. Yet the industry is committed to being at the table to help the legislature navigate through the difficult process of crafting a solution that is best for the people who rely on the mining industry for their livelihood and all the residents of Nevada who benefit from the mining industry. As such, we are neutral, and we thank the legislature for taking the opportunity to engage in thoughtful discourse. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 964, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
For the record, Mary Walker, M-A-R-Y-W-A-L-K-E-R, representing Lang County. We rise in neutral to AJR 2, and I'd like to thank Mr. Watts for bringing this forward. We rise in neutral to AJR two, and I'd like to thank Mr. Watts for bringing this forward. Our major concern in AJR one and SJR one was the elimination of revenue to rural local governments. AJR two retains that revenue to the local government. For over a hundred and fifty years, rural local governments have relied upon this revenue which was put in the Constitution. And AJR two retains this longstanding portion of the law. Rural mining counties only have one lifeline. It's Section Five, Paragraph Two in the Nevada Constitution. Retaining it would be extremely important to us. So I want to say thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and good health to all of you.
We are currently taking calls in the neutral position. Please press star nine to raise your hand to get placed in the queue. Caller with the last three digits, zero-two-zero, please spell and state your name for the record. You have two minutes. You may begin.
My name is James Waddams, J-A-M-E-S-W-A-D-H-A-M-S. I'm with the law firm Black &amp; Mabello, and I'm here tonight, this morning, representing Newmont. I have identified Newmont in previous testimony, but I would like to say we're appearing in neutral because we respect the opportunity to have deeper discussions about sustainability as well as generating additional revenue. We encourage that communication and commit to participate in it. With that, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I conclude.
Mr. Speaker, there are no more callers in the queue for those in neutral of the bill.
Thank you very much. We will bring it back to the Committee of the Hall. Let's see, we got Assemblywoman Benitas Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would move to do pass SJR one.
You heard the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Assemblywoman Benitas Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to do pass AJR one.
You've heard that motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Motion carries. Assemblywoman Benitas Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to do pass Assembly Joint Resolution Number Two.
You've heard that motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion carries. Assemblywoman Benitas Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that Committee of the Hall rise and report to the Assembly.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Nay.
The Assembly will come to order.
Mr. Speaker, Committee of the Hall, to which were referred Assembly Joint Resolutions Numbers One, Two, Senate Joint Resolution Number One has had the same consideration and begs to report the same recommendation due pass. Jason Fireston, Chair.
Go to Order Business Twelve.
Assembly Joint Resolution One, introduced by Committee of the Hall, proposing to amend the Nevada Constitution to revise provisions governing the taxation of mines, mining claims, and the proceeds of minerals extracted in this state. Resolve that this resolution becomes effective upon adoption. End of resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the Assembly adopt Assembly Joint Resolution One.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, are there any amendments to the resolution?
There are none.
Assemblywoman Benitas Thompson has moved that the Assembly adopt Assembly Joint Resolution I'm sorry, we were gonna adopt, we're gonna pass now, resolution.
Move to pass Resolution AJR one.
Man, we're tired. Assemblywoman Benitas Thompson has moved that we pass Assembly Joint Resolution Number Okay. Can we just open the roll? Oh, I apologize. Assemblywoman Benitas Thompson has moved, can we close the rolls? Assemblywoman Benitas Thompson has moved that we adopt Assembly Joint Resolution Number One. Remarks. Assemblywoman Titus.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you to this body for everybody remaining awake and engaged in this process. I am going to rise in opposition to not only AJR one, but to make the evening go a little faster, I'm rising in opposition of SJR one, AJR one, and AJR two, just to make this move a little quicker. It's day number, I was gonna say two when I first wrote this thing, but now it's day number three of the thirty-second special session. And again, we choose to use our time to chip away at this legislative process. Now we are looking at amending our state's constitution by significantly shorting a process that is intentionally not easy. I'm not suggesting that the Constitution be totally immutable, but I believe this resolution and those, all the resolutions, sets a dangerous precedent by saying that a simple majority of legislators in both houses can hold absolute power and make statutory changes in order to expedite the process of making this change to Nevada's Constitution. There was a statement earlier tonight that mining does not help education, they need to give their fair share to education. I beg to differ. Mining does add many dollars to the education process here in Nevada. Article Five, Section Nine of our state constitution states that, and I quote, "The governor may, on extraordinary occasions, convene the legislature by proclamation," end quote. And we've had statements that indeed we can also have these joint resolutions during this time. However, we've been called here to deal with this unprecedented effects that resulted from the COVID pandemic. I'm sure that the virus has affected all of us and each of us in many different ways. Why I'm not sure is why these resolutions are being processed during the special session, which purports to deal with emergencies that cannot wait until regular session. If we are generally worried about the financial crisis of our state we are in, we are looking at solutions that would have a more immediate effect and not something that at the earliest changed with revenue in twenty-twenty-three. We are unraveling, unraveling complex tax policy that took decades, literally decades, to develop and implement in one day, actually more than one day now that we're over this hour here. This is a process that should be done with all parties at the table, so as with other pieces of legislation that comes before this body, we can understand that consequences of our actions will be. This is bad policy, these are bad policies, and I do appreciate, however, that there has been conversation, I don't want to let it go ignored, that there is conversation, and finally brought mining to the table, especially regarding AJR two. So we appreciate that. However, at this time, I'm going to be a no vote on all three of these resolutions we're seeing tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Assemblywoman Benitas Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in support of AJR one. I rise in support of AJR one because I believe that the best course of action during this time is to present to voters options for how we can better address revenue flowing into the state of Nevada. We have to go talk to our constituents, we have to be responsible to our communities, and when we balance the budget, we also have to talk about how we can make sure resources are ready and on hand. This is not a new conversation, Speaker, nothing about this is original, I will admit. This is a conversation that we have been having since statehood, having mining in the Constitution with special provisions that other businesses and industry would absolutely die to have. It's time to talk about fairness, and it's time to let communities around the state have conversations about what is fair. So when we talk about gross versus net proceeds, we make the conversation more fair because we start with the true point about what is being earned by that particular mine in this industry. We did hear a representative from the industry say that eleven thousand jobs are going to be lost, and I just don't simply think that that's going to end up panning out. He's assuming that every single business that did not pay net proceeds is going to fold up and go away, and that was what we heard him say. But when we look at those businesses, all you have to do is go to their business site and look at their investor reports, and you see evidence there in plain writing that tells you how profitable they are. For example, if I lived in White Pine, I would ask why KG Mining did not pay one penny to local or state government in net proceeds, but in their investor reports talk about how they are doing so well around the world and how they are paying dividends. If I lived in Lander County, I would ask, or Elko County, I would ask Heckla why they did not pay one penny in net proceeds tax to local government or to state government, yet they report that while they're being publicly traded on the New York Stock Exchange, they are value it at one-point-seven billion dollars. I would have those residents ask these questions about fairness and about why their counties aren't getting revenue that could support their local government infrastructure, could support their schools, could support a number of different things. I could go on and on in those examples, but I don't have to. That's the good thing. The good thing is that with supporting and passing this, we can continue the conversation, we can continue having this conversation in our communities and move forward, and that's why I'm supporting Assembly Joint Resolution One.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Order of Business Fifteen.
Order of Business Fifteen.
I rise in opposition this morning to Assembly Joint Resolution One and Senate Joint Resolution One. Mining in Nevada creates tens of thousands of well-paying jobs throughout the state. Mining is the backbone of many of Nevada's rural communities. Unfortunately, these resolutions put those jobs in these rural communities at risk. I greatly appreciate the questions and concerns from my colleagues, especially my colleagues from District Seven and District Forty. I too have serious questions and concerns over the removal of Section Five, Sub Two, which currently provides net proceeds to counties. This has the potential for some serious unintended consequences, some of which we have heard tonight. Though we've been asked to consider this during this special session, I believe it is clear we need more time to fully vet these proposals. I urge my colleagues to vote no on these measures. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Assemblywoman Peters.
I so appreciate the attention to hygiene. Order of Business Fifteen.
Order of Business Fifteen.
Thank you, Speaker. I rise in support of Assembly Joint Resolution One. As members of the Silver State, we know our mining industry has made up the fabric of our state's history. However, as much as mining has it been undeniably a part of our Wild West culture, so has our gaming and tourism industries. In two thousand eighteen, our state welcomed fifty-six million visitors, and there is no denying our gaming and tourism industry has significantly funded much of our state's budget and allows us to provide vital services to Nevadans and their families. We are not the Wild West anymore, and it is time our revenue structure grew up too. We were just here earlier this month managing a billion, an over-a-billion-dollar budget deficit. I'm cold, I'm shaking. Forced to make painful cuts none of us wanted to make. I appreciate the hard work my colleagues and I did in our previous special session to make sure our most vulnerable populations were protected. But the reality is, we need more revenue. This public health crisis will leave lasting economic impacts on our community, but this pandemic has exposed the cracks in our budget system. I rise in support of AJR one because it means more revenue for our kids' education. I have three. I appreciate that. Better access to affordable healthcare, which we desperately need, and better safety nets for our families. We have the opportunity to vote today on a new revenue structure that will have lasting impacts on our state and the families we represent. I fully support this resolution and urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. And I will note, I appreciate the body's patience and diligence in sticking this out. This was a collective group decision to stick this out and get our work done, recognizing that we want to make records and make our issues known. But I will say two things. Number one, I think that this body agrees that more vetting needs to take place, and it's called next session. And these are three, not just one, but three opportunities to continue that conversation and that vetting. I want to thank the members of the industry who came forward and offered the beginning of a discussion. But I will also say that I respectfully disagree, this is an emergency. And we're having this conversation right now because we are in an emergency, and we'll be able to have conversations over, presumably over the next session, to continue to have that conversation to deal with that emergency. But we will have that conversation, and we will have the opportunity to further vet and hopefully come up with a common ground that'll move our state forward in a responsible way.
Ms. Bill Bray-Axlrod?
Yes.
Assemblywoman Bill Bray-Axlrod has voted yes. Assemblyman Carrillo?
Yes.
Assemblyman Carrillo has voted yes. Assemblyman Edwards?
No.
Assemblyman Edwards has voted no. Assemblyman Fumo?
Yes.
Assemblyman Fumo has voted yes. Assemblywoman Spiegel?
Yes.
Assemblywoman Spiegel has voted yes. Assemblywoman Swank?
Yes.
Assemblywoman Swank has voted yes.
Is there anyone who should change their vote? There are twenty-nine ayes, thirteen nays. The resolution has received a constitutional majority. I declared passed, ordered immediately transmitted to the Senate.
Assembly Joint Resolution Two, introduced by Committee of the Hall, proposing to amend the Nevada Constitution to revise provisions governing the rate of the tax upon the net proceeds of minerals extracted in this state. Resolve that this resolution becomes effective upon adoption. End of resolution.
Any amendments to the resolution?
There are none.
Assemblywoman Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in support of AJR two. I've said this before many times, but, you know, I started in this building in nineteen ninety-nine, and mining was one of the first industries that reached out to me to make sure that Democratic woman that worked in a coffee shop in southern Nevada knew what rural Nevada was about. And I truly appreciate them doing that and educating me, and I know a number of our other colleagues here have had the same type of education and have gone on tours, so they truly have been a partner with the legislature. And I have deep appreciation for how they treat their employees. Some are covered by a collective bargaining agreement, others aren't, but it's all very high-wage work with great benefits and a retirement. It is the middle-class dream when you're working in mining. working in mining. There's no denying that they're a significant part of this state, and they've played a big part in how the state has developed. But it's not 150 years ago, we've moved on, we've changed, and it's time to take a look at how we address mining as we move forward. The state has suffered a pandemic and a catastrophe to our budget, 1.2 billion. We just went through 12 days of trying to figure that out. A lot of sleepless nights, a lot of tears, and a lot of heartache in what do we fund, because there really was no extra revenue. We did the best that we could to protect the most vulnerable people in this state. But I want my colleagues to remember that what we just did this last special session will not happen again next session. We will still be in the hole. There will still be harm unless we do something to start generating revenue in this state to address the needs of this state. I've been through a couple of economic recessions, I've seen a lot of Band-Aids, they don't work. We can't just Band-Aid this again together. We have to get something done now to make sure that there is a true systemic change in how our revenue works in this state. I've also been here for one of the longest periods of growth. Before this pandemic happened, we outperformed all of our forecasts. We were on the right track, we were getting things done. But unfortunately, the pandemic happened through no one's fault. So with this public health crisis, it's exposed how vulnerable our budget really is, and now it's time for us to make those steps forward to address those inequities in our budget. So I stand here in support of closing this loophole in mining, because I truly do believe it is the right thing to do. Mining has always been a friend, I've always appreciated all the work that they've been, and, Mr. Speaker, I truly appreciate that on AJR two, they were here neutral. The doors open, the conversations will continue, and I know that they care about the state as much as we do, and we will find a solution to this problem. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. There being no further remarks, the Chief Clerk will open the roll.
Assemblywoman Bill Bray Axelrod?
Yes.
Assemblywoman Bill Bray Axelrod has voted yes. Assemblyman Carrillo?
Yes.
Assemblyman Carrillo has voted yes. Assemblyman Edwards?
No.
Assemblyman Edwards has voted no. Assemblyman Fumo?
Yes.
Assemblyman Fumo has voted yes. Assemblywoman Spiegel?
Yes.
Assemblywoman Spiegel has voted yes. Assemblywoman Swank?
Yes.
Assemblywoman Swank has voted yes.
Is there anyone wishing to change their vote? There are 29 ayes, 13 nays. The resolution having received constitutional majority, I declare it passed and ordered immediately transmitted to the Senate.
Senate Joint Resolution One, introduced by Committee at the Hall, proposing to amend Nevada Constitution to revise provisions governing the taxation of minerals extracted in this state and to require the legislature to provide by law for a program to make payments to eligible persons in this state from a portion of the tax on the proceeds of minerals. Resolve that this resolution becomes effective upon adoption.
Are there any amendments to the resolution?
There are none.
Remarks. Assemblyman Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Order of Business fifteen.
Order of Business fifteen.
The power to tax is the power to destroy. That's why we have to do taxation policy very carefully, thoughtfully, and smartly. My major concern is that we're not doing that here in the special session because we're not giving ourselves enough time, and I don't think that that's a wise thing to do. And after all, the reason that we had a revolutionary war is because the taxation policy was not thought through by England. You don't want to make that mistake again. I also am kind of concerned that there's a lot of talk about what is the fair share. Nobody has really quantified it. The only measure we really have here is a 140% tax increase on an industry. I don't know how to say that that could possibly be fair in any manner. I don't think it's wise, I don't think it's sustainable. If that's an olive branch, I would hate to see the hammer. I would be in opposition to this bill.
Any further remarks? There being none, the Chief Clerk will open the roll.
Assemblywoman Bill Bray Axelrod?
Yes.
Assemblywoman Bill Bray Axelrod has voted yes. Assemblyman Carrillo?
No.
Assemblyman Carrillo has voted no. Assemblyman Edwards?
No.
Assemblyman Edwards has voted no. Assemblyman Fumo?
Yes.
Assemblyman Fumo has voted yes. Assemblywoman Spiegel?
No.
Assemblywoman Spiegel has voted no. Assemblywoman Swank?
Yes.
Assemblywoman Swank has voted yes.
Anyone wishing to change their vote? There are 25 ayes, 17 nays. The resolution having received constitutional majority, I declare it passed and ordered immediately transmitted to the Senate. I think we'll go to order of business fifteen. Assemblywoman Tolles.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for indulging one final thought for this morning. I just wanted to note that on August 2nd, 40 years ago today, the Assemblywoman from District Thirty-two married the Senator from District Fourteen, and I want to wish them congratulations on their 40th wedding anniversary.
Assemblywoman Benitas Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We join our colleague from the north in celebrating your years of happiness, and we want to celebrate it even more by not forcing you to come to this building tomorrow. You're welcome. So, Speaker, I would move that the Assembly adjourn until Monday, August the 4th at 11:00 a.m. third, oh yes, Monday, August the 3rd at 11:00 a.m.
You heard the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.